Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, September 20th, 2021, and this is a Moscow City Regular Council meeting. And with that, it's good to see we got a good lively crowd here this evening, which is terrific. Welcome all. With that, Gina.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gina. The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move approval of all consent items.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Gina and a second by Maureen to approve the consent agenda as it is stated. I will start to roll with Ann.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Aye.
Okay, with that, we will move on to item number two, which is Staff Recognition Report. Gary Redner, sir, do you have anything for us this evening?
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, item number three, Mayor's Appointments, and I do not have any this evening. So we are going to go into the public comment and mayor's response period, which we usually run this about fifteen minutes this evening, or any evening, but some of the ground rules for that, ladies and gentlemen. And we do have a public hearing tonight, which is item number five. Anybody who wants to speak during that public hearing will get a chance and an opportunity to do so. So please do not come up during the public comment period because you will have a time to share with us your thoughts. And also, anything that is in front of planning and zoning and/or the Board of Adjustments, or for that matter, anything else that is on this agenda this evening, there will be appropriate times for that. With that, we will open up the public comment period. For those, we'll give you three minutes, state your name, your address, and your concerns.
Your Honor, members of the council, I'm Michael Jennings, and I'm here to introduce two people who are going to talk with the council about Moscow's Ready for 100% Clean Energy Petition, signed by hundreds of citizens and businesses that are asking our city council to maximize its efforts to achieve 100% clean energy in the near future for the entire city. Now, I was asked to introduce the speakers and provide some perspective because I've spent the last twenty years doing research and development on biodiversity and climate change. I keep up with the primary science literature, and I regularly use climate models to predict future conditions and biotic responses for a wide variety of issues. Council members, from a science perspective right now, the data and the conditions show that we are at zero hour with climate change. By zero hour, I mean that we're at the point that we have no choice but to act now if we're going to stop the planetary-scale climate change positive feedback system that we have set in motion. As one of several examples of where we stand right now, a recent and very important finding published last month in Nature Climate Change, which is probably the top climate change science journal in the world, found that the Atlantic overturning circulation is now close, and I repeat, close, to a complete loss of stability. Should this happen, it probably would mean the collapse of ocean circulation globally, from which we most likely would not get back to for many hundreds of years. This is what I mean by zero hour. It would profoundly change the agriculture, economy, fisheries, hydropower, transportation, population, and human health in Moscow and in the Palouse and everywhere else. That a collapse of ocean circulation is identified as being close in the top scientific climate change journal of the world is pretty overwhelming. And I've been reading and participating and writing in the climate peer-reviewed literature for a long time. And this is completely stunning to me when I read this paper. Members, this is not an ordinary policy dispute that can be revisited some other day. We're at zero hour. Those who will be most seriously and perhaps permanently affected will be the next generation. And with that, I'd like to introduce Nicole Chao and Devin Conway. They are of the next generation. They speak for the next generation, and they are working very hard to avert the tragedy that is coming at us faster and sooner than we had thought possible. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Michael. And before Devin speaks and then Nicole, I just want to tell you, these kids are part of the Climate Justice League. I got that correct, didn't I? And there's a bunch of young folks up here at our high school that's working diligently on this, which I very much respect. With that, Devin, I will let you go, sir.
Okay, thank you, Michael, for that introduction. Yeah, my name's Devin Conway. This is Nicole Chao. Yeah, we're here today to present Moscow's Ready for 100 Petition. Ready for 100 is a nationwide movement started by the Sierra Club that aims to get cities to make commitments to 100% clean energy usage. The campaign in Moscow has been run since 2019 and wants Moscow to set the 100% clean energy goal for 2045. Nicole and I got involved with the campaign last May, and since then, we have had an amazing time learning more about local government and climate advocacy. I want to start by acknowledging the dedication that Moscow has already shown to reducing carbon emissions and fighting climate change. I first think of the 20-by-20 commitment made in 2010 and completed last year in 2020. That goal was the first measurable climate action goal made in the state of Idaho, and it solidified the community of Moscow as one of Idaho's leaders in climate action. Moving forward, we have continued to make progress in fighting this issue, and I want to recognize the part that the council and you, Mr. Mayor, have played in that. I've been very happy to see the commitment you all have shown to this issue with the climate workshops, the readiness to act, with the allocation of $20,000 to climate issues over the summer, and the overall understanding of the urgency of the climate crisis. Part of the reason we're here today is because we think Moscow is once again in a position to lead on climate. We are still in between climate action initiatives, which means we are one step away from setting an example for northern Idaho.
Moscow is more than willing to take this initiative.
Nicole, please state us your name, please.
Oh, yeah, of course. Hi, everyone. My name is Nicole Chao, and Devin and I are co-presidents of Climate Justice League, which is a youth climate advocacy group based here in Moscow. All right. Moscow is more than willing to take this initiative, but unfortunately have been lagging behind our counterparts. In 2019, Boise passed Idaho's first-ever ambitious clean energy goal for a city, pledging 100% clean electricity by 2035. And even more recently, Boise's mayor, Lauren McLean, announced the city's groundbreaking agreement with utility company Idaho Power to transition all city operations to clean electricity by 2023. And it's not just Boise. Bellevue, Blaine County, Pocatello, and numerous other Idaho communities have all made RF-100 or similarly ambitious clean energy commitments. But I don't want to dwell on other cities and their progress too much. I'm here to talk about Moscow and why our city is poised to take the helm of becoming northern Idaho's first city to make an RF-100 or ambitious clean energy commitment. This is a bold step to take, but Moscow is already laying the groundwork for this to take place. As Devin mentioned, Moscow has accomplished the 20-by-20 initiative, and we have a net-zero, carbon-neutral goal by 2050 with an interim goal in 2030 to achieve 100% clean electricity. The current RF-100 proposal calls for 100% clean energy by 2045, which includes car emissions and heating systems. The most salient point out of both of these commitments, though, is that Moscow has an opportunity to make a community-wide commitment. We should not let the scope of this stop at just municipal operations. Instead, we have a truly once-in-a-lifetime chance to incorporate all our community members and a variety of stakeholders into our plan for 100% clean energy.
Moscow's citizens have already shown a lot of support for the Ready for 100 campaign. The Palouse Group of the Sierra Club has been working on this goal since 2019, and there has been consistent support of the initiative from businesses and community members. I'm sure no one here has been blind to the RF-100 yard signs that have been popping up all over town. Through the past five months that Nicole and I have been helping with the campaign, seeing the community support has been my favorite part. When I think of RF-100, I think of the Saturday that we spent at the farmer's market collecting short videos of people's thoughts on our campaign and clean energy usage in Moscow. Almost everyone we talked to that day was supportive, to the point that we had more videos than we even wanted. I believe their comments accurately communicated how the community as a whole feels about clean energy. That day, we also collected RF-100 petition signatures, which we are here today delivering. The petition has accumulated over 400 signatures, and 12 businesses have signed on as well. Based on what I've seen, I think the people of Moscow have been waiting on the city to make a serious, community-wide, clean energy commitment like RF-100.
And despite people's worries, a bold clean energy commitment is not only imperative for our future, but also practical. As I mentioned before, many other Idaho communities have already made ambitious clean energy commitments, and now is the time for Moscow to do the same. We truly have an opportunity to be a leader for northern Idaho, and we should seize the chance to do so. Moreover, the groundwork for a conversation with the Vista Power, Moscow's sole energy provider, has been laid. Over the summer, a Vista representative, Paul Kimmel, visited Moscow and met with the Sustainable Environment Commission, the SEC, and Climate Action Working Group, COG. He gave both an update on a Vista's clean energy goal, which is 100% clean energy by 2045, and which aligns perfectly with RF-100's commitment. From this encouraging news, there are three notable points to be brought up. One, our utility companies are willing to make the step towards bold clean energy commitments. Two, there's political and city will to collaborate with them, as the SEC and Climate Action Working Group meetings demonstrate. And three, there is community support, especially amongst young people, for this bold climate action to take place, as Devin and I's presentation shows. And let me be clear, Moscow doesn't have to stop at 2045. Numerous other cities have set commitments even earlier than this date, and Vista is in conversation with them to make this a reality. As the climate crisis continues to wreak havoc, we should look to create as ambitious a clean energy commitment as possible.
As young people, we see the climate crisis in terms of the future. Sure, the recent changes we've seen are scary, but they're nothing compared to what we're facing decades from now. To us, politics and funding are small issues compared to the reality of what is coming. We care about the climate for many reasons. I'll start with recreation. Our generation is full of people who love getting outside and enjoying nature. Living in Idaho, this is even more pronounced. The youth here appreciate our pristine wilderness and plentiful wildlife, both of which are being harmed by climate change. Climate change impacts don't stop there. Powerful weather systems and forest fires are destroying homes and taking lives, and disadvantaged people are beginning to face serious problems with food insecurity and lack of clean water. Things are looking grim now, and because of climate change's positive feedback loops, like Michael was referring to, the magnitude of these threats is going to grow at an increasing rate. A clean energy commitment is the best way for us to start fighting.
I know promising an ambitious clean energy commitment or even making the verbal declaration to do so can be a risky political move, especially in a place as politically turbulent as Idaho. But the climate crisis doesn't pick and choose sides, and no matter the political affiliation, the devastation that longer wildfire seasons, a dwindling aquifer, and a shrinking snowpack affect us all. As youth, it is terrifying to think that these climate-induced disasters could very well be our future, and more so because the inaction of the present will worsen the future. Because as Devin and I have been working on this campaign for months, I've seen a common thread amongst talking to adults. They usually end our discussion with, "It's the young people, like you, who are going to solve this problem." Such a mindset implies that the issue is a future problem, that we can wait another 10, 15 years, a whole generation, to turn a blind eye to the climate crisis. But the reality is, with every moment of inaction, the climate crisis exacerbates. We've seen this with the record heat wave that hit us this summer with 107-degree temperatures and the spread of plant diseases that have affected the Palouse's vital multimillion-dollar agricultural economy. As youth, we've done everything we can on our part. C.J.L. has spent months campaigning, lobbying council members, sending letters to editors, and doing everything in our power to raise the profile of clean energy for Moscow. But the nitty-gritty policies, the time spent making a climate action plan, that's not necessarily our job. For now, the ball's in your courts, the adults. And as youth, we implore our city council members, city staff, and Mayor Lambert to please recognize the urgency of the climate crisis and show your support for the Ready for 100 movement to commit Moscow to 100% clean energy by 2045. For the sake of your children, your children's children, and future generations, this bold climate action is absolutely needed. Thank you.
Thank you both, Devin and Nicole, for that. One of the things I want to say before anybody else comes up here is that, look, you know, older generations do have a tendency. I don't see that. What I do see is it's not your responsibility. It's all of our responsibilities. The problem is, the problem's going to be dumped on you, young people, right? So that's how we see it. This council up here is very interested in climate change and climate control, as I am as well. And in fact, a week from tonight, we will be having a workshop right in this very chambers on that very thing. So, yes, it's very, very important to all of us. And under our strategic planning priority-based budgeting, it's in one of our tiers for assets going forward. We have three different tiers, tiers one, tiers two, tiers three, so on and so forth. And it currently is in tier two, and it will always be in tier two because the thing of it is, it's going to be ongoing. It's not going to stop. It's going to be ongoing. So we are coming forward with that. There's others that would like to speak. Give us your name and come on up, and we'll give you three minutes.
Hi.
Tell us what your name is, sir.
Hi, I'm Shimmer Shai, and I've also been very much concerned about this issue with global heating for a long time. I just want to say real quick that I think that 2045 sounds almost kind of being a little bit too lax. I would suggest at least 2035 as a better deadline than that. I would also go and suggest that the cost of doing nothing is always going to be greater than that of doing something and doing enough. It's always going to be greater. It doesn't matter what you think in terms of how you've calculated it or whatever. You know, the fact is, we can't survive without the earth, period.
Thank you. Young lady, I see somebody back there. Come on up, you want to speak. I see a... No, the one that turned around. Would you like to speak? Okay, yeah, you. Yes, ma'am. I seen you look around. You looked like you wanted to say something. So come on up here and tell us who you are and address us.
My name is Lena Wenska, and I've lived in Moscow for all 15 years of my life, and I am very concerned about our aquifers and the rapid housing growth that Moscow is seeing. The Woodbury Development that is...
Miss, there's going to be time for you to speak. We're going to have a public hearing on that, so I cannot take that testimony right now. So this is just public comments. Anything that's on this evening's agenda, I won't let you talk about. But if you want to sit down, you'll get a chance when we have the public hearing. Well, we got a few more minutes before I close the public comment period. Is there anything that somebody else would like to come up? Mr. Paul?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Paul Kimmel of Vista Utilities, 107 South Grand Suite E in Pullman. My residence is 1037 Four Mile Road in Viola. I'm not here to talk clean energy tonight, but I'm happy to talk more in the future, both with council and with members of the public. And I appreciate the passion in your presentation tonight, so thank you. I'm here to just thank you for participating in our Palouse Basin Leadership Roundtable. Last week, some of you were there. Again, it was intended as a conversation with our leadership in the Palouse about the water situation. And as we heard, it's a wicked problem. But we have wicked smart people in the community, our universities, our research community, and we are working towards solving that, towards stabilizing the aquifer, towards more conservation, and really continuing to thrive in this community. So I want to thank you for that and want to make sure that you all know we still fully intend to have a Palouse Basin Water Summit on October 21st. It may be a virtual, we're not sure. The window continues to close on live events, but if so, we'll continue to let you know. Our keynote speaker, thanks to Nicole Baker, one of your great city employees, on water. It was suggested we bring Amy Vickers to the community. Amy wrote the book, The Handbook of Water Conservation. And so we have her going to speak at the summit. We'll talk about conservation and ways we continue to improve on... I mean, both of our communities have great conservation programs, but we can do more. We need to do more, and you all know that. We've got great success, but she will challenge us, she will inform us, and certainly it will be a great conversation. We'll also hear, again, about the state of the basin, where we are with some of the cutting-edge research on the four alternatives, as well as other related topics. So again, Mayor, Council, thank you for both your financial support and your continued encouragement. We're going to figure this out. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment period, but I do want to say one thing is that this whole thing is very serious to all of us and has been for a number of years. And yes, people are working on it. They're not ignoring it at all. And I really appreciate these young people, Climate Justice League, for coming in here and being a part of it. I love it when we get young people involved, and we need more of that. So it's really exciting for me, as an older guy, to be able to see that because it's going to be something that needs to continue. And please come to the workshop because we're going to be discussing a bunch of different things next Monday. Right at 5:00, Gary?
Yes.
Okay. Now, one thing I will say before we go on to item number five, because I know I got a lot of young folks here that are going to school, and it's a school night, and you are welcome to stay here, but we will take like a two-minute reset to let any of those folks that want to leave prior to going into the rest of our agenda tonight, which will be lengthy. So with that, we will take a two-minute recess, and we will come back at 7:24. Annexation Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation. Zoning Designation Preliminary Plan and Plan Unit Development. We have Michael right here this evening presenting. Michael, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. Before tonight, we have a public hearing at the request of Winston Company for Woodbury Annexation Comprehensive Plan Designation, a zoning designation, preliminary subdivision plat, as well as a plan unit development. It's a 21.73-acre property located in red at the center of your screen. You can see Trail Road here is located to the north, Arborcrest Road to the northwest, Lanny Drive here to the southwest, and Slonaker Drive as well to the south, Yeoman's Lane to the southeast there. Primarily agricultural land, surrounded by some rural residential, and then low-density, single-family residential development within city limits boundary, which is represented by the purple dash line on your screen. Orchard Avenue, I would point out, is located to the west and the southwest of the property as well. So Winston Company LLC is proposing the annexation of the 21.73-acre property, generally located north of Slonaker Drive, east of Arborcrest Road, south of Trail Road. A little delay on the clicker. So Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation is currently auto-urban residential in the area-city impact. Applicants proposing to retain some portions of auto-urban residential and then re-designate suburban commercial for a small portion. Zoning Designation's Ag Forest, and the proposal's moderate-density, single-family residential, which is the R2 Zone, as well as neighborhood business zone for a small portion. Brings us to the Woodbury subdivision, as well as the plan unit development. Seventy-four lots ranging from 3,794 to 17,973 square feet in size. Neighborhood business portion would include seven lots. R2 Zone would be 67 single-family lots. Just a closer view of that property, currently in agricultural production, as well as to the west, north, and to the east. So photo from 2018, so there has been some developments that occur in Peekaboo Estates, which includes Lanny Drive there to the southwest. Single-family homes are currently under construction there. Brings us to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation, currently designated as auto-urban residential, as well as almost the entirety of the surrounding property, in and outside of city limits. This would be the proposal, retain auto-urban residential, and then there'd be a portion of the suburban commercial designation. That's represented by the pink on your screen. So taking a look at what the 2019 Comprehensive Plan states about auto-urban residential, contains primarily single-family detached homes, lots ranging from 7,000 to 11,000 square feet in size, typically more isolated from surrounding uses, may require residents to rely more on automobile transportation, usually low to moderate-density residential uses at densities between three to six units per acre. Also could include a mixture, single-family, twin homes, townhomes. And then it points to the appropriate zoning designations, which include the R1, R2, and R3 zones. Suburban Commercial, it's intended to provide local neighborhood commercial services in a manner that is compatible with residential neighborhood environment. Lands appropriate for that designation include those in proximity to higher-density residential developments or intersections of designated collector arterial streets near residential development. Should include additional building scale design standards and, most appropriately, zone neighborhood business. So brings us to the zoning map of the area. Ag Forest is the current designation, as well as the remainder of the area-city impact properties to the west, north, and to the east. Within city limits boundary, you have some, a mixture of R1, which includes Slonaker Drive, Blackwood subdivision. Peekaboo Estates is R1 as well. Then you have a mixture, some farm ranch, which is remnant county property in the area-city, in the city limits boundary. You also have suburban residential, pockets of Ag Forest, and R2. You also have suburban residential, pockets of Ag Forest, and R2, which is the Highland Drive neighborhood across to the west from Orchard Avenue. The proposal is the R2 zone, which is moderate-density, single-family residential, and then the pocket of neighborhood business there in the northwest corner. So R2, moderate-density residential zone appropriate where following circumstances are present. Single-family dwellings predominate the area. Terrain's not harshly irregular, and smaller lot sizes can accommodate without extensive earthwork. Utilities and other public facilities are adequate for densities allowed. Existing lot development patterns and policies embodied in the comprehensive plan also guide the application of that zone. Looking at the allowed uses in the R2 zone, really primarily a single-family residential zone. Does include some urban agricultural components, some market and community gardens, some childcare facilities, and public parks and recreation facilities as well. Going through minimum lot size, a 7,000 square feet for that zone, width is 60 feet, although if it's accessed via alley, you can reduce that to 50 feet. Setback requirements, front yards 20, sides are five, but combination of both sides has to equal 15, and street side's 15, and the rear's 20. Looking at neighborhood business, appropriately applied in the following circumstances, where local commercial facilities will serve everyday needs of a limited neighborhood area. Activity levels associated with small-scale office development can be accommodated or tolerated by residential uses. Where a neighborhood core is identified, which is easily accessible by pedestrian or vehicular circulation, and where such commercial development will result in minimal interference with residential uses in the vicinity of the NB zone. Really a wide range of commercial and residential uses. So it would include residential uses above or behind, commercial use on the property, some urban ag uses again, fitness center, veterinary services, professional offices, restaurants, coffee espresso stands, childcare facilities, community and neighborhood centers, healthcare services, museums, art galleries, religious facilities, retail personal services, off-street parking areas, as well as bed and breakfast ends. Going through the lot size requirements, so single through multifamily dwellings, it'd be 5,000 or square feet, or 800 square feet per dwelling unit, whichever's greater. Townhouses require 1,800, twin homes are 2,250. Lot width for single through multifamily would be 50 feet, townhouses 18, twin homes would be 25, and the setback requirements, 20 in the front, 10 on the side, street side's 10, as well as the rear yard's 20. So that brings us to Woodbury subdivision, 21.73 acres again, 74 lots ranging from 3,794 square feet to 17,973 square feet in size, seven lots in neighborhood business, and 67 in R2 zone. The applicant has proposed a PUD to coincide with the preliminary plat, requesting numerous zoning code deviations to accommodate, really a master-planned subdivision that's of the new urbanist design. Entire property owner wishes to develop is approximately 82 acres in size, extends from Sloniker Drive to the south, Arborcrest to the west, Trail Road to the north, and slightly to the east of Yeoman's Lane to the east. The first phase is just the 21.73 acres, which is proposed to be annexed at this time. And that brings us to the preliminary plat proposal. You can see in the lighter shade, the remainder of the proposed subdivision in the future. You can see Arborcrest here to the northwest, Trail Road to the north, Sloniker to the south, and you'll have Lanny Drive here off the screen to the southwest. You can see that Sloniker is proposed to be extended through the proposed subdivision. There's two main public streets, Village Way, which would be this street right here, ends up coming around a center green space. And as part of this first phase, there would be a 20-foot-wide emergency services, construction access road, which you can see on the screen here. So just a closer view, you can see the two main streets, Sloniker Drive, as well as Village Way, here's Sloniker, ends up extending north. Majority of the lots within this subdivision are all accessed via more of an alley-like private street, and so a lot of the lots are rear-loaded, except for some of the larger lots, as it makes a transition from the existing Blackwood development to the south. Various linear park system throughout the development, you can see the common open spaces, various points, a lot of the lots would face a common green space in the center. Snore Bonner detention parcel here in the southwest. And then the plat map, there are 25 off-street parking spaces, so Sloniker Drive would have parking on both sides of the street, Village Way would have parking on one side of the street, per our 28-foot-wide standard. Since the private streets that access the rear of a lot of the lots do not have on-street parking, the applicant's provided 25 off-street parking spaces. You can see those identified off of the private streets at these locations throughout the Just moving to the north. So the applicant's proposing master-planned community, it would include a number of small neighborhoods that are linked by a combination of city and private streets. Community would include rear-loaded garages, front porches, tree-lined streets, walkway system that will connect to a number of small linear parks. Each home in the neighborhood is proposed to be unique, but also be of the same architectural style. And there are only four types of lots that are being proposed as part of the PUD. First are the village, those are surrounding the center park area all the way to the north. They also include the neighborhood business zone lots. What's being referred to as the cottage lots, which are clustered in neighborhoods that surround the village center. There's four clusters at full build-out of the proposed development. Fort Russell are larger in size, those surround the cottage neighborhoods. And then the garden lots are the largest, and those are located at the perimeter of the development, as you transition from the existing neighborhoods, which typically tend to have larger lot sizes. Those are not proposed to have rear access via private street, those are the only lots in the proposal that have street front-load access. So it brings us to the PUD map, you can see the colors coordinated here. You have the neighborhood business, so those would be the village lots there around the center green to the north. Moving outward, you have the cottage lots, which tend to front center green areas, so these are the cottage lots. Transitioning out from the cottage lots, you'll have the Fort Russell lots in the light blue shade here. And then transitioning to the existing neighborhoods to the south, you have the garden lots, which are larger in size, as well as being front-loaded. So looking at the village lots, they're surrounding the center park area. They're the smallest residential lots in the development, which include those seven neighborhood business lots. And they're intended to face center park and have a private street at the rear, which provides vehicular access, fire department access, as well as refuse collection. And looking at the average lot size, it's 4,800 square feet for those lots. And then all neighborhood business uses are proposed to be allowed on those village lots, is what the applicant has proposed. Transitioning to the cottage lots, applicant's referring to all cottage lot clusters as micro neighborhoods. All lots proposed to face the center green with walking paths and vehicular access at the rear via those private streets. Each home is unique, but still follows the style of the neighborhood. And then the average lot size for the cottage lots would be 4,800 square feet in size, so gives you an idea of those lots facing the center linear park area here. And then they had provided example building elevation, so this would be the cottage building plans. And then looking, it's about 11,076, or 1,176 square feet for the square footage of the floor plan. There's a kitchen, living room, office, bathroom, two bedrooms, as well as an additional bathroom off of the master bedroom. Transitioning to the Fort Russell lots, those surround the cottage core and are larger lots. Applicant's typically referring to those as Fort Russell because of their similarity, the existing Fort Russell neighborhood in Moscow, in regards to the lot size, tree-lined streets, and rear alley access. Average lot size of the Fort Russell lots is 6,600 square feet, with dimensions of 60 by 110. So the larger lot sizes tend to accommodate larger homes than those cottage lots. And they also have example building plans depicting architectural design similar to what you typically find within the Fort Russell district. And then once again, it's the light shade of blue on your screen.
Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I thought those ones were the yellows, and the pink was the village, and the blue was the cottage. Do I have my colors mixed up?
Cottage are really the, this shade here.
Okay.
The light blue is the Fort Russell, these transition to the guarded.
Got it, okay.
The village are, yeah, the combination.
Okay.
A few different ones, but they're the neighborhood business lots, which are represented in the pink there.
Thank you.
Yep. So this is the conceptual building elevation for Fort Russell, 2,250 square feet for the floor plan. See a dining kitchen area, there's a living room. Master bedroom, master bathroom, laundry, pantry, another small water closet, bathroom, couple outside porches, with a front porch as well. Those are really a story and a half. So the garden lots, the perimeter of the development, were adjacent to existing neighborhoods, are the garden lots. Most of those have garage access directly from the public street that they front, so setbacks are proposed to be greater. Applicant's intending to provide a transition from the existing neighborhoods all the way through the development. And then the average lot size of the garden lots is 16,500 square feet, with dimensions of 110 by 150. And once again, the garden lots are adjacent to the existing neighborhoods here. This is a sample building elevation, so two stories for the garden lots, you can see the two-car garage there. Brings us to the floor plan, you have a master bedroom, office den, entry area, kitchen, dining, pantry, garage, bathrooms. And I would like to point out that all the plumbing fixtures within the bathrooms do have water-conserving equipment with low-flow fixtures. These were the applicant submitted as far as the lot sizes, as well as setbacks. So you can see the center cottage, or I guess it would be the village cottage and Fort Russell lots, so seven-foot front and seven-foot rear, five-foot side setbacks. Brings us to the garden lots, the bottom of your screen, seven-foot side setbacks, 10-foot front, and a 10-foot rear. And then just looking at the common lot sizes there as well, and how homes might fit on those lots. Applicants also provide, provided for your convenience in your packet, an attached chart that really breaks down kind of the uses, lot sizes, setbacks, off-street parking, and encroachment, and exemptions, in one detailed table there for your reference. So looking at encroachment, the applicant's proposing architectural projections, such as bay windows, porches, eaves, to be able to encroach three feet into the front and street-side setbacks. So this isn't dissimilar to what we already allow within the zoning code, we actually allow four feet with those encroachments. The fences, front yard fences limited to 42 inches in height, setback 18 inches from the sidewalk. Hedges in the front setback should not exceed 48 inches in height, and the fences, the walls should be consistent with the architectural style of the house. Rear and side yard fences are encouraged for privacy, should not exceed six feet in height. Fencing over 48 inches should be required to have 50% opacity, which can be softened with vines and plantings. And then gates and arbers permitted, and hedges on the side and rear of the lot are unrestricted. Taking a look at our PUD base density, in the PUD section of the zoning code, R2 base density is 4.8 dwelling units per acre, neighborhood business is 24. Proposed PUD is a base density of 3.44 units per acre, so no density bonuses are required as part of this project. The on-street parking, like I had mentioned, is on both sides of Sloniker Street, and on the side of Village Way. Proposed private streets contain no on-street parking. Applicant's proposing to provide those 25 public off-street parking spaces, be dispersed throughout the subdivision on the private streets. And then each lot within the proposed subdivision will have a minimum of two off-street parking spaces dispersed between the garage and the driveway, depending upon the lot. This is what we require within all of our lots within the city and residential zones, is two off-street parking spaces per single-family dwelling. ADUs are permitted so long as the setbacks can be met. The village cottage and Fort Russell lots may be placed above a one, two, or three-car garage or carport. Maximum floor area is 750 square feet is being proposed. The garden lots may be placed above a garage or carport or be independent, with 1,200 square feet being the maximum size. Brings us to our transportation plan, thoroughfare plan within the comprehensive plan. Have two versions here, one without the labels for the street names, it provides a little bit more clarity on what's going on, but essentially have collectors, which are designated by the green lines, and then a future collector would be a dashed green line. Minor arterials are the blue lines, so you can see Mountain View Road is currently designated as a minor arterial. Lanny Drive is designated as a collector, Orchard is a collector as well. And you can see the future extension of what would be Lanny Drive there, all the way to Mountain View Road and Darby at some point in the future. Trail Road to the north is designated as a minor arterial. Sloniker is constructed to the prior street standard, which is a 34-foot-wide paved section, includes two 10-foot travel lanes, curb gutter, tree lawn, sidewalks, and on-street parking on both sides of the street. Applicant's proposing to continue that section through their subdivision, only to reduce the tree lawn from eight and a half to seven feet throughout Woodbury. And our Assistant Parks and Rec Director, David Schott, has reviewed the proposed seven-foot width of the tree lawn and determined that according to the arboriculture specifications and standards, seven-foot-wide tree lawn's sufficient for the large-class trees that you would see within the tree lawn area. So he has no issue with that. This is the prior designation, the 34-foot-wide street, and you can see the only change there is the reduction in the tree lawn from eight and a half to seven. There's an emergency secondary access, like I mentioned before, as well as a construction entrance, proposed to be extended from the subdivision to Trail Road to the north. Minimum 20 feet in width, all-weather driving surface will be required for the secondary access road per fire department requirements. Future phases the entire development, our plan to connect to Arborcrest, Trail Road, as well as Yeoman's. So looking at Village Way, the other public street within the subdivision, so it's 28-foot wide, two 10-foot travel lanes, curb gutter, tree lawn, sidewalk on both sides of the street, on-street parking only one side, and then as well as Sloniker, applicant's proposing to reduce the tree lawn. In this circumstance, it's 10 feet, applicant's proposing to reduce that to seven feet in width, and this is our 28-foot standard, so you can see the only change would be the 10 to the seven on the tree lawns on either side. Looking at the private streets within the proposed subdivision, Midsummer, Picatinny, Petit, Maison, Southwick, Rosemary, and Cozy, maintained by a homeowners' association. Current city private street standard is 20-foot-wide paved roadway with curbing on both sides of the street. Applicant's proposing an alternate design, would function and be designed similarly to our public alley standard, so 16-foot-wide paved roadway, two-foot gravel shoulders on both sides of the street, provides that primary vehicular access, as well as emergency services access to a lot of the lots within the subdivision. Fire marshal has reviewed the private streets for sufficient access, and the applicant has modeled the turning movements or the private street intersections, and determined that the sufficient fire truck turning radiuses on those intersections. So this is the private street section that the applicant's proposing. 16-foot-wide pavement, two-foot gravel shoulders on either side, really adjusted for the utility easements on either side, that accommodate franchise utilities. Looking at the two one-way streets, so the confluence of Sloniker and Village Way at the center park are proposed to be one-way around center park. Ashton Circle in the southwest of the subdivision also proposed to be one-way, heading in the easterly direction, eventually intersecting Sloniker. Currently no one-way street standard that the city has adopted. So the applicant's proposing a standard with a 12-foot travel lane, eight-foot lane for on-street parking on one side of the street, so it would include a seven-foot tree lawn and five-foot sidewalk proposed on one side of the street, and this would be the standard that they're proposing. The applicant did contract with DKS Associates in Portland, Oregon, to conduct a traffic-to-impact study on the existing roadways and primary intersections within the area. The intersections that were analyzed were The intersections that were analyzed were Mountain View Road, D Street intersection, Mountain View Road, F Street intersection. The TIS was conducted for the full build-out of the subdivision, estimated two-hundred-and-seventy single-family units. Traffic impact study concluded the proposed subdivisions expected to result in minimal impact to vehicle traffic conditions at the study intersections and meet city operating standards under all development scenarios. It also concluded that no mitigations are needed to address potential project impacts to traffic conditions. These were the two tables that are submitted, so these are the study intersections, AM and PM peak. This is Mountain View and D Street. See, the operating standard is level of service D, which is acceptable at these intersections. The proposal, this would be the AM peak, which are all level of service B, as well as the PM peak, which are all shown as level of service B. So not even really any close to the level of service D, which is still an acceptable designation there. Moving over to Mountain View and F Street, same thing, so level of service D is acceptable. We have AM peak, which are all level of service A, it's the best you can get. PM peak would be all level of service A as soon as you transition to phases three and four, which would be level of service B. Also have projected traffic volumes, so daily trips. You'd see the, the projected, which would be the bold blue. And then, the proposed subdivision daily trips, which would be the increase. So you see some fifty percent increases in portions of the streets servicing the property. Two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty daily trips would be proposed to be generated from the subdivision. So the City of Moscow Engineering Department has reviewed the TIS, has no concerns with the analysis and the results. The results do indicate that a fifty percent increase in traffic on portions of Mountain View is projected to occur as a result of the subdivision at full build-out. Currently, a segment of Mountain View between the intersection of Sloniker Drive and Mountain View extending to the south to the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center does not have sidewalks, curbing on either side of the street or bike lanes. Engineering Department is therefore recommending the applicant be responsible for fifty percent of the construction costs associated with the installation of curbing sidewalk roadway widening in order to connect this missing segment of sidewalk on Mountain View Road. Engineering Department shall determine which side of the street is most feasible for those improvements to be constructed on. They also have concerns with the site distance after Mountain View Road makes a ninety-degree turn to the east with vehicular queuing that could occur up to left, to turn left on a Sloniker Drive. Engineering Department is recommending applicant evaluate a left-turn lane from eastbound Mountain View on a Sloniker Drive to determine whether a turn lane's warranted there. If it is, engineering's recommending the applicant be responsible for constructing that said turn lane. And this is the segment that we're referring to, so we have the improvements on the north side of the street that were installed as part of the Blackwood addition, Sloniker Drive. There's Mountain View Road. You can see no curbing sidewalk on either side of the street. Till you pick up the Aquatic Center here to the south, and then, it's located on the east side of the street. And there's intermittent curbing on the west side that's occurred with property improvements that have, that have happened over the years. Looking at water service, existing mains in Sloniker proposed to be extended throughout the subdivision. Our two thousand and twelve comprehensive water system plan indicates the existing si- system has adequate potable and fire flows to serve the proposed development. Sanitary sewer, there's mains that also currently exist in Sloniker. The main will be extended throughout the subdivision primarily within the public and private streets. And of course, our two thousand and eleven comprehensive sewer system plan also indicates the existing system's adequate to serve the additional flow. Storm sewer is piped through stormwater detention pond located at the southwest corner of that subdivision. As with all new development, the detention facilities within the proposed development will need to meet Moscow's stormwater runoff control standards, which require the stormwater to be detained at the pre-development rate and then conveyed. Parkland dedication, so there's ten-point-nine-eight acres of net developable land. R2 requires five percent, and neighborhood business requires nine. Brings you to twenty-six thousand seven-hundred-and-forty-six square feet for the dedication requirement. The applicant has submitted a letter proposing to defer the parkland to a future phase for the entire subdivision for a natural area comprised of three acres and a one-point-one-four acre area that totals four-point-two acres of open space that will include grading, a detention basin, ten-foot-wide gravel pathway provided by the developer. And it's anticipated the parkland dedication requirements for the entire subdivision would be around two-point-three acres. So the four-point-two acres of dedication, the applicant's proposing, together with those improvements to the parkland property would satisfy all parkland dedication requirements for the entire subdivision. It's the Assistant Parks and Rec Director's opinion that the proposed deferral of parkland meets the dedication requirements for the subdivision. And the Parks and Rec Commission did review the proposal at their August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one meeting, and they recommended approval to City Council of this request. City Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct the public hearing for the proposed comprehensive plan, land use designation, rezone, preliminary plat and PUD occurred on August twenty-fifth of this year, and they recommended approval of the preliminary plat with three conditions. One was the left turn lane be evaluated, so that's the eastbound Mountain View on a Sloniker be evaluated by the applicant, determine whether a turn lane's warranted, and if so, the applicant shall be responsible for the construction of that turn lane. The second was, in order to mitigate the increases in vehicular and pedestrian traffic on Mountain View Road as detailed in the applicant's TIS, applicant shall be responsible for fifty percent of the construction costs associated with the installation of curbing sidewalk roadway widening in order to connect the existing pedestrian bicycle facilities near the intersection of Sloniker Drive and Mountain View Road with the pedestrian bicycle facilities on Mountain View Road near Hamilton Low Aquatic Center. Proposed roadway improvements shall only occur on one side of the roadway, which shall be determined by the City of Moscow Engineering Department. And finally, the, the last recommendation was that access be restricted to the subject property from Sloniker Drive to emergency services access only until all required public infrastructure is completed in accordance with the approved development agreement. So it's staff's recommendation for the council tonight to conduct the public hearing upon the annexation, comp plan designation, zoning designations, PUD, and preliminary plat, and upon consideration of any testimony presented, approve the annexation ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings. If the annexation ordinance approved, approve the proposed comp plan, land use designation resolution, and adopt PNZs RCS. If the annexation ordinance is approved and the comp plan designation resolution is approved, approve the proposed zoning ordinance under suspension of the rules and adopt PNZs RCS. If the annexation ordinance is approved, comp plan designation resolution is approved, and the proposed zoning ordinance is approved, approve, approve the proposed PUD for Woodbury addition and adopt PNZs RCS. And then, if all that is approved, approve the preliminary plat for Woodbury addition with conditions and adopt PNZs reasoned statement of relevant criterion standards. And certainly try to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mike?
I have a quick one.
Randy?
Um, just, you were talking about the, uh, the conditions with the Mountain View sidewalk. What would the timing of that be? When would that be required to go in?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, we'd have to work that out in the development agreement, so the council could certainly review that. But typically, as all the public infrastructure is completed, prior to any building permits being issued for the development.
Okay, so not before the construction happens?
Unless something else was worked out through the development agreement that the council agreed to
Uh-huh.
as far as the timing of those improvements.
Okay.
I know that's not in the current capital improvement plan, and we'd certainly have to look at funding fifty percent of those costs from the city. And so, that's something we would have to look at as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And, and, um, related to that as well, where it has to be, it says it will be determined by the engineering department which side it would be on. If it is on the, say, far side of, I mean, I guess we would say the more eastern, eastern and south side of Mountain View? If that's determined where it should be by the engineering department, how will pedestrians safely get to that sidewalk from the north side?
Well, that's something we'll have to look at. So those are kind of the, how we weigh
Okay.
both of tho- both those sides, which would be better. I mean, we have the improvements that extend all the way up on the east side, so it'd certainly be a shorter length. But we'd have to figure out how to get across the street to tie into the existing sidewalk on the north. And so, whether or not we do that mid-block on Mountain View on the way up, I believe that's Public Street, the small segment there. Whether we make that crossing and continue those improvements on the west side. That's something, and the ease of, of the improvements being constructed, you know, on which side, it's just something that we'll have to look into further with our engineering department.
Okay, so I think that the rest of my question really is, and we can get back to it, but just how do we, in, in our, this being a decision that we're making tonight, if we're concerned about the timing of this, what is our process for ensuring that we're comfortable with the timing of that? If that's something that we end up continuing discussion on.
Maureen.
And then, I also have a question about Sloniker down to the, um, Mountain View Park and then to Logos School. Where are we gonna do about the traffic that comes out of there? I mean, assuming that everybody goes into town, which is probably the busiest place, but we suddenly stop at Sloniker. Is there any thought about what's gonna happen to Mountain View?
Well, it's a bit of a challenge because that, that property's all located in Leita County. Logos School, per their conditional use permit, was required to widen Mountain View and install some type of pedestrian facilities along Mountain View on that segment. And so, that will be part of the construction of Logos when they finally put in the public infrastructure and get started on, on that project. So it will be widened, and there will be pedestrian facilities at least on one side of the street which connect Mountain View, Logos property with Sloniker.
And then, there's also that question about whether or not there's gonna be a left-hand turn lane on Mountain View? And that's gonna be determined by the applicant?
Yeah, typically, you would have the DKS Associates out of Portland, the same company that did the, the traffic impact study. They would look at that and provide a recommendation, whether or not that's warranted. Initially, with our engineering department looked at it, it looked like it probably was. And so, it's, it's likely that that would be a requirement.
So I just have a question on that. Does the city have any say in terms of whether or not there's gonna be a turning lane or not?
Yeah, our engineering department would work with their engineers.
They would have to approve whatever they came up with.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just a quick follow-up, so that, then, again, that timing of that turn lane, if it is determined that they, they do say they are recommending that, is it up to us to determine we would want to see that put in before anything happens?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be part of the development agreement. Typically, you're responsible for all the public infrastructure prior to any building permits. But depends on the phasing. I know that there's, the applicant's proposing to divide this phase up into two phases. So whatever the council decided there.
Just to be clear, I find that, I just want to make sure I think I got this correct, which is while the infrastructure is going in, that infrastructure will all come through Trail Road.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for Mike before I open up the public hearing, Sandra?
Mike, this, this doesn't have to do with traffic right now. That will probably come later. Um, do you know, all of these, um, homes, will they, will they all be under a homeowners' association agreement, or will they?
Certainly, the applicant could speak to that. It's my understanding that they have a pretty robust homeowners' association to take care of the snow on a lot of the private streets as well as the linear parkway system. So there'll only be really one park that's proposed to be public. The remainder will be private, open space that the applicant will need to maintain. And so, they'll need a, a pretty large homeowners' association in order to be able to do that. And I would assume that the houses within the subdivision would also be under the homeowners' association.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mike, for the in-depth presentation. We will open a public hearing at eight oh-two, and then, we will hear from the applicant first, please. And please state your name and address, sir, when you get up there.
My name is Mark Wince. I live at one zero zero four Dairy Lane in Moscow. And I want to thank you, Bill, and the council and staff for having us tonight and being able to present this project. This project is, uh, the fruit of, of many years of thinking about subdivision design, being interested in it. And, and then, in the last year, working with the Trails and Sean Wilson and so many others to, to bring it to, to bear. So, uh, we, I just want to say, we greatly respect the opportunity to be able to develop in this, on this project. I think it's one of the most special pieces of property that we have on the edge of Moscow. And I, you know, take, we, we approach it with, with, with fear and trembling, you know, I mean. So we, we want to do a, a really a good job there. So it goes back about a year, we started talking with the, with the Trails and, and they were, you know, willing to discuss it if they've, you know, were convinced that we would do really a top-level job. We went out and we found a, uh, let me just go back. About forty years ago, a, a movement started that was sort of a reaction to post-war sprawl called New Urbanism, and you probably all know about that. But, so what it is in just short is like taking the best things that we did in the past and boiling them down and bringing them to bear in one subdivision. And just being very thoughtful about everything and just, you know, how, what is it like to walk down this sidewalk? What's the best situation, how, you know? So, uh, I found, uh, needed some help, for sure, so, from a designer. So I found, uh, a firm that, that had designed this project south of Seattle called, uh, Seabrook. No, yeah, Seabrook. And, um, went over there, looked at it, met with their firm there, and after a couple of discussions and spent several days and, and we worked this project out. So I just wanted to just real quickly show you, just because it looks like a, a, you know, like what's happening here. But the, the, again, this is just our phase one of the project. And this right here is of the cottages around like a center, center green. The alleys that are, that rear-load them are gonna be like little lanes. So the city's gonna let, we're gonna apply with the, comply with the, with the alley requirement of the city. But they're gonna be like small paved lanes that you come in. Your front door is on this green, okay? So we're doing one of these over in Pullman right now, and it's very, it, it, we're getting a very sophisticated buyer. They're all sold. We're, we're only halfway built in the project, and people see what the vision is. And it's all a very mature buyer. You know, our, again, our demographics have changed to where the number-one buyer group now are are empty nesters, really, but, you know, couples without children. And the number-two buyer group is singles, mature singles, and the number-three buyer group is families. So we're kind of reorienting our product type to, to meet, you know, a, a, a different, different demographic that we have here. So, um, this little kind of collection connects across with this greenway to another one here that connects across with a greenway to another one here that connects across, you know, so that there's this loop of these that you can walk kind of along these sidewalks on the in- inside of them. There's no streets in there, okay? So really pleasant place to walk. I mean, it looks like a bunch of streets, but, but these are not streets, you know, these are just walkways. And then, there's, of course, walkways that cut across into the Central Park. Maybe a place where you can get a, a, a coffee or something like that, you know, in the morning. And then, there's walkways that cut through the whole project if you follow them through, that, you know, go, go through the whole project. This is gonna be our, our dedication to the park over here. And it'll be kind of natural. So there's already sort of a natural water land down in, down in here that it's, are intended to kind of pair with. So that's, and then, and then around, you know, of course, the larger lots, you know, and then, we just use the Fort Russell idea because, you know, we're, we're trying to get the whole shady lane thing going and use big, big trees. And the city's been really great about working with us and staff has, so. So that's, that's, that's the idea for the project is, you know, move the houses, you know, the front porch cottage kind of idea, move them closer to the street so that people that are going by are, you know, you can talk to them. And it just, try and promote community, so that, that's, that's the idea here. We think that, you know, and from a sustainability standpoint, from an energy use standpoint, these homes are gonna be, uh, building science has come a long ways, you know, in the last twenty years. It's really significant. It's really significant, the changes that have happened. I mean, if you'll remember, there was a big LEED movement that happened maybe fifteen years ago. That's not that big a deal now, because the codes have come up to those standards, you know, so homes that are being built now compared to a home that was built even twenty years ago, significant improvement, so those, of course, will all be there, and the buyer today expects that. It's heavily landscaped, this is going to be a heavily landscaped project, so water retention is a lot different than on a wheat field, you know, that's just, where there's a lot more runoff. Animal habitat, you know, I mean, if you go and you build this thing out, and it's, you know, there's a lot of birds and small animals and so forth that can live in this that can't live out on a wheat field right now. They're taking their life in their hands to run across or something like that, so. So that's the project. Sandra, there was a, you know, about HOAs, yeah, the whole thing will be under one HOA, it'll be pretty low cost, but it maintains all the parkways, the central park, and then each of those little kind of micro neighborhoods around there will have a, an HOA that kind of steps that up, where like your snow is removed right to your front porch, your front porch, you don't have to own a lawnmower or anything like that, you know, you can, everything is mowed and taken care of right up to your front door, so that's our project in a nutshell.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark. We will hear probably some more from you here in a little bit, so thank you. With that, I'll open it up to anybody that is in favor of this development, please come up, state your name, address, and I will give you three minutes.
Thank you, council. My name is Levi Wince, I live at four fifteen North Van Buren, apartment number four. I just wanted to speak very quickly in favor of the project. I've had the pleasure of working with my dad on this project for the last four months, and thank you, Mike, also, for giving a great introduction, and I hope you can see just the thought that has gone into this project. Moscow is growing, that's fairly obvious, and we're in a housing crisis, and with SEL and other companies seeming to move to town, it's only going to worsen, and so I think we want to see Moscow grow, but also grow, of course, in an equitable way, in a way that's planned out. I think it'll be hard to find a development that's more thoroughly planned than this one, and I just wanted to speak on two different things. First, if it hasn't been made clear so far, these, of course, will all be private properties, but the hope is that the development as a whole will be open to the public. The parks will be privately maintained, yet open to the public. There'll be neighborhood business, that'll be open to the public, and so the hope is that while there's private residences inside the community, that this will ultimately be a public good and a place that all of Moscow can benefit from. I think the other thing I wanted to touch on briefly, we know the concerns that are out there as far as water and traffic. I'll let the traffic study speak for itself, because I don't have any more insight than those professionals do, but as far as conservation and the development, a few of the things that were talked about, but just wanted to go back over, is the preserving and increasing wetland dedication to the west of the property, increasing biodiversity and a lot of landscaping, yet also taking away front lawns, and so there won't be sprinkler systems for each lawn, and that will save a dramatic amount of water, also reducing water runoff with permeable surfaces, and water conserving plumbing. So that's it, and thank you for your thought.
Thank you. Others that are in favor of this?
Hello, my name is Scott Sumner, I live at one oh six, sorry, one oh six South Hayes, and I am the project engineer and project manager for this, the design of the project. I've been working with Mark for over a year on various projects. This one has been probably the most challenging in terms of any project that I've worked on, with the intricacies of Mark's design. There's a lot of things that he has gone and done aesthetically, not just trying to maximize as many houses as he could fit in there. As far as one of the things I want to speak is the traffic study. We selected DKS in part because they were the firm that put together Moscow's transportation plan. So they had history of Moscow, they knew a lot of the data, and they were familiar with it, what we were trying to do and the timeframe that we were trying to do it. We utilized the most accurate data, the most current data that we could use, and we forecasted it to current date, and that's, that is a typical situation for a traffic study that we've done. As far as the left turn lane coming onto Sloniker, there are warrants and traffic counts and situations that aren't, they're pretty black and white. It's not, DKS won't come up and say, ah, we just kind of feel like it. There'll be some data that'll back up the decision whether to add a left turn lane, or which phase we need to add to left turn lane, versus whether it's going to be initial. So there are a lot of things that are going to come into play throughout this design, and some of the information that we'll continue to come up with as we try and meet the needs of the city and the council. If you guys decide anything else that we'll need to do, we'll continue to try and answer those, and come up with the situations that work best for the safety of the people in Moscow, as well as the community in the surrounding areas. I will be around to answer any more technical questions that you guys have, or the public has, throughout the night.
Thanks, Scott. Others in favor, please come up.
Sean Wilson, twenty-seven eighty North Mountain View. I represent Trail Family LLC. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time and your service to our community. Just wanted to speak a few words on behalf of the property owner. Selling this property was not something that the Trail family took lightly. Trail Family LLC is comprised of the sons and daughters of Floyd and Louise Trail, who, these are all people that many of you know, long raised in this community. We weren't looking for just anybody. We were looking for somebody who was thoughtful. We were looking for a plan that was thoughtful, that was a compliment to what I believe, and as Mark eloquently said, probably one of the most unique and special pieces of property that would be set for development at some point, when the time was right. We weren't actively soliciting it, but the right person came along. Mark has made a very thoughtful presentation to the family long before we got to this phase. We thoroughly vetted his plans and his ideas, and we're very supportive of him, and we hope that you will be as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Others in favor, please come up.
Hi there, my name is Leah Clark, and I live at nine twelve Public Ave. I wanted to speak in favor of the Woodbury Development. I have a degree in architecture and have had the pleasure of working with the Wince Company for the past month or so. I have seen the effort and thoughtfulness going into this project, and I know there are two major points of concern, water usage and traffic. And on the note of water, much of this development utilizes communal green space areas rather than individual large yards. This should reduce the individual water usage and act more as a communal park nature, rather than large lawns. Now, as to traffic, I too will be affected by the increase by way of this development. With that, I can assure you that growth is inevitable in Moscow. In fact, we need growth. Along with growth comes traffic. But when traffic increases, it will take place in, oh, excuse me, what I can't assure you is that the next development will encompass as thoughtful design, which aims to better the quality of life to residents, as well as all members of our community. Truly, every bit of this project has been designed, redesigned, and I'm sure will continue to be designed again and again, just as good design should be. Thanks.
Others in favor? Okay, we will go with those that are not in favor, or general testimony, please come up, and we will give you three minutes, state your name and address, and...
Hello, my name is Lena Venska, I live on twelve forty-six Highland Drive, so quite close to this. I've lived in Moscow for all fifteen years of my life, and I am very concerned about our aquifers and the rapid housing growth that Moscow is seeing. The Woodbury Development that is being discussed today is just one example of the many new developments I've noticed. These new subdivisions and housing developments beg into question, do we really have enough water? Do we really have enough water for this influx of new housing? According to Moscow's comprehensive plan, in the section about potable water, it states, quote, "Moscow relies on groundwater for its sole source of drinking water. The aquifers below Moscow have historically experienced a decline in water levels, which might limit growth if additional supply and conservation measures are not implemented", end quote. Although conservation measures have been used recently, I don't think they will be enough. The city has five wells. Wells number two and number three draw water from the Wanapum system. Wells number six, number eight, and number nine draw water from the Grand Ron system. In Moscow's comprehensive plan, it states that the most current evidence suggests that the Grand Ron Aquifer does not experience significant recharge. The Wanapum Aquifer does experience recharge, but the recharge rates and locations are not yet well-understood, end quote. First of all, I think the city needs to collect more data about the recharge rates of our aquifers. How will we actually know whether the aquifers can supply enough water for future growth? We already know they are declining. As Moscow grows, more houses are built, more streets, parking areas, sidewalks, and other paved areas will not allow water to be absorbed by the land to recharge into our aquifer. Looking at the broader context with climate change, in Moscow, winter precipitation is expected to increase by two inches in the upcoming years. This will mostly be seen in rainfall, not snow, and it will be harder for it to drain and, and it will be harder for it to runoff rather than recharge into deeper soil and aquifer. This problem will only be exacerbated if new housing developments are constructed in ways that will limit replenishment of our aquifers. I call on Moscow representatives to think carefully about new subdivision development and its impact on the water supply of our city. In the section on community values in Moscow's comprehensive plan, it states, quote, "To sustain the community for years to come, today's use of resources must be mindful in the needs of current residents and that of future generations," end quote. I urge the city to take necessary steps in water conservation, researching more about our declining aquifers, and making conscious city planning decisions for future generations, such as myself, who will live here for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, La. Before the next person comes up, I'd like to make a comment. We heard earlier from Paul Kimball about a workshop, the P-BAG presentation that they put on last Wednesday, and one of the things I'll tell you, folks, about water since nineteen ninety-two, and this is not my numbers, this is the numbers that was brought in front of us as a group, and there were four counselors, three of them are here this evening, heard the same thing I did. Since nineteen ninety-two, and P-BAG instituted different degrees of levels of water usage, we've had a thirty-five percent growth in populace, and this includes the Pullman area as well, but yet we've reduced our water usage by fourteen percent, and that's a significant number. So conservation is working. One thing we do know is, we know that we can't conserve our way out of everything. Sometime there is a point that we need to do this, but I wanted to make the folks here aware of that fact, because really, the area has done a great job by using different devices, whitescaping, zeroscaping, and different methods, little flush toilets, showers, so on and so forth, smaller lawns, so on and so forth. Anyway, I wanted to put that out there, folks, and that's not my number, that came from P-BAG, so with that, I will look forward to the next person, please come up.
Hello, my name is Megan Clemesroot. I live at five thirty-eight North Blaine Street, here in Moscow, and I actually believe we are in a water crisis now, and I'm here to, tonight, to ask you to please pause approval for the land annexation and development of the Woodbury Development, until we have concrete answers concerning the diminishing water supply. The just-approved two hundred and forty unit Eddington subdivision, along with many recently approved developments, are breaking ground all around us, while we are still uncertain if there will be enough to sustain them. I realize that Moscow is currently looking for additional water supplies, and as we talked about it tonight, and listened to a few, one alternative I was heard about was piping in water from the Snake River. How costly will that be? When asked about plans for water conservation and sustainability at the Planning and Zoning Meeting last month, Mr. Wince's rebuttal was, well, there will be shared green spaces with shrubs and gravels in the high-density cottage, but it didn't explain how they were going to conserve and the sustainability for the Fort Russell-sized lots, and the large garden lots, and the, with carriage houses, or in the private businesses, for private parks, the large grassy areas, the tree-lined streets and pathways, let alone the volume of water of these individual households that they will need to live on. We're talking two hundred and seventy units total at the end of this development, along with carriage houses, which attach buildings on these units. I ask you, how much water, this huge amount of water, excuse me. Not only are the questions concerning water an issue with the Woodbury's development, but it's our lack of connectivity and community with our downtown, which is an important part of our city's comprehensive plan. At the Planning and Zoning Meeting, Mr. Wince talked about connectivity and community, but within its own Woodbury Development, not to our downtown Moscow. This eventual two, eventual two hundred and seventy-unit development would be two miles from town, off the underdeveloped portions of Mountain View and Orchard, both currently lacking sidewalks and bike paths. You addressed Mountain View, but nothing about Orchard. To reach the Woodbury complex, there are two gravel roads to the north, Trail Road and Arbor Crest, eventually, when this is done, or the quickest and most efficient way in and out through two quiet and established residential streets, Sloniker Drive and Landy Lane. Even with costly improvements to both Mountain View and Orchard, these two quiet streets will become the major collector streets and/or arterials, of which they never were intended to be. If approved, all traffic flow east of Hay Street and north of D Street will forever be a nightmare.
And will you wrap it up? Your time is up. Would you wrap it up? Your time is up.
Okay, I'm almost, this development is designed to be its own private community. It is too large for this location. It is better suited to be off a main highway or off a larger city where access in and out can flow more smoothly. Our city's MCP says to protect our valuable agricultural lands and beautiful Palouse views, Mr. Wince has referred to this property as a monoculture of weeds. I beg to differ, this spring it was a beautiful yellow canola field.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Last winter, I'm sorry, I just have to say.
Your time is up, please. Adhere to it like you're all the other folks, well, thank you very much. Folks, I just, we respect everybody to stay within the timeframe, so please come on up, sir.
Your honor, city council members, good evening. My name is Paul Hendricks. My wife, Beth, and I live at thirteen oh six Sloniker Drive in Moscow. Our property is directly adjacent to the proposed Woodbury Development. At the recent Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, myself and others expressed concerns over construction traffic and traffic in general that this project will undoubtedly generate. While Mr. Wince did concede on the initial construction traffic being required to use trail road, I am still convinced that the traffic study used in the application process is flawed. By the city's own admission, it was using data from two thousand and six and two thousand and seventeen, that is hardly current data. And, you know, using outdated data to interpolate future traffic without consideration of the years of construction ahead just doesn't seem to fit the bill here. The logic behind forging ahead with development plans before addressing infrastructure escapes me. Logos School will certainly influence traffic patterns in the quadrant, in this quadrant of the city, and now we add Woodbury to the mix, using a traffic study, as I said, that's used old data. Any road improvements, sidewalks, etc. Any road improvements, sidewalks, et cetera, will surely cause headaches for citizens with construction delays, but how much more so after this development goes forward? At the Planning and Zoning Meeting, the only people who spoke in support of this project were those who would benefit from it financially, while many concerned citizens expressed legitimate concerns over traffic and water use primarily. Is the timeline of the developer more important to the leadership of Moscow than the concerns of its citizens? I doubt that anyone here thinks this project won't be approved, but why the rush? In a recent article in the Daily News, September 15th, I have a copy of it here if you haven't read it, it's entitled "Student Safety Prompts Change to Traffic Flow." We are already experiencing safety issues on Mountain View intersections relating to morning school traffic. So the plan to move ahead adding more traffic to Mountain View and Orchard, this sounds like a classic case of ready, fire, aim. Is there anyone in the room who does not see the logic in making infrastructure improvement before adding traffic to the mix? It helps the citizens and it will help the contractor. It'll be safer for the contractors doing the work. They'll have less traffic to deal with. So what I'm... Why not get in front of this rather than playing from behind? In addition to the issues with Mountain View and eventually Orchard Avenue, what about Lanny Drive and Sloniker? Neither were mentioned in the traffic study to any great extent, as I recall, yet once the first house goes up on the construction traffic will no doubt need to be addressed on these smaller residential streets.
Sir, would you wrap it up, please?
I am. The next question, how do we fund the improvements? Has the city considered impact fees on new housing? Many, probably 90 percent of the communities in Florida use them and have used them for years to offset costs to current residents. Shouldn't the city explore this possibility? If the city council will take a deep breath, slow down, ask some very pointed questions, I think you'll see that there are too many unanswered questions here to immediately approve this project. Please listen.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Your name, young man?
My name is Abdurrahman Costello. I live at 795 Brent Drive. And since I do not have a well-thought-out speech like my friend Lena, I'm a junior at Moscow High School. And as repetitive as it may be, I'm another water guy.
That's okay, we're fine here with my water.
And I'm impressed and rejoiced that the city council has taken into consideration the sustainability of our city. I moved here a year ago. I don't want to take a lot of time, but I moved here a year ago. I fell in love with the clean air of Moscow, the greenery, the streams, the ponds, although unstocked with fish, which led to a very bad first fishing experience. Yes, don't ask. I fear that the gaps in research we have about the aquifers, which are significant gaps, and which we do have major resources, we have a whole university that's... their environmental engineering section is outstanding, their ecology section is outstanding. All of them have PhD students that are more than willing and more than capable of making those gaps in research, if not completely disappear, which is unrealistic. We can't snap our fingers and the issue of the environment disappears. But it could cause a significant growth in data. And for the last point, I understand and respect all the engineers and the architects that their work has gone into a very well-thought neighborhood. I would not call it other than that because it is a whole mini-town with stores and everything. Yes, the smaller lawns and communal greenery, the no sprinklers and the low flesh toilets are helping, but they're only a bandage to a gashing wound of water in Moscow. And with that, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, I'd mentioned about last Wednesday being at this meeting with P-BAC and others, and both universities, Washington State University and the University of Idaho were represented there and spoke well in depth. So just thought I'd throw that out there, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, others would like to come up?
City Council members, Mayor Lambert, thank you for this opportunity to share with you all. I know you've had many...
Amen.
My name is Ann Hostia. I live at 1183 Wallen Road in Moscow. You've had a lot of housing applications before you lately, and I suspect that it may be partly due to HB 389, a bill that the governor signed into law this spring. I'm trying to sort it all out, and maybe you understand this more clearly than I do, but these are the high points as I understand them. HB 389 is a win for developers. It extends a developer's property tax exemption from the date when home building begins to the date when the development is complete. The Woodbury project is expected to take 10 years, if all goes well, according to the developer, so this could be a significant break for him. But HB 389 has a much less favorable implication for longtime Moscow residents, including taxes. A new subdivision generates tax revenue, that's true. We understand that. But HB 389 places two caps on a city's ability to fund large-scale growth. First, it caps the aggregate annual increase of property tax revenue at 8 percent. Caps it at 8 percent regardless of the number of houses built and the demands that those residents will place on existing infrastructure. HB 389 also caps property tax revenue from a new dwelling at 90 percent. As I understand it, in the past, the city could use 100 percent of tax revenue from newly-developed areas to expand public services for newcomers. Services like police, citywide road maintenance, fire, and the like. But HB 389 artificially reduces the tax bills for new homes while taxing existing homes at full value. And this shifts an undue fiscal burden to existing residents. The Woodbury has lovely tree-lined streets, a Fort Russell vibe, and entry-level homes priced over $300,000. This is not the low-income housing that we so desperately need. It also has the potential to drive up market values for nearby homes, leaving unduly burdened neighbors on the hook for even higher property taxes. The elephant in the room, of course, is the struggling Grand Ron Aquifer. Growth will necessitate a new water supply, but we don't know what it'll cost. Will taxes go up to pay for water that's piped or trucked into town? I don't know, but I expect so. So, before welcoming new residents to town and our tax rolls...
Would you wrap it up?
I ask that you consider the impact of HB 389 on current citizens. I urge you to enact a moratorium on annexation and on new development approvals while we study the price of water supply alternatives. This will also give the city time to research the ramifications of HB 389 on Moscow's fiscal health. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
David Hall, 1334 Wallen Road, Moscow. Mayor Lambert, City Council members. I submit that annexation of this property would go against the Moscow Comprehensive Plan regarding preserving agricultural land uses adjacent to the city, and the potential for use of large amounts of our precious groundwater goes against the best interests of the citizens of Moscow, which is one of the comp plan's goals, I believe. The previous speaker addressed some of these issues in more detail. I ask you to not annex this property for development based on going against comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Kurtz from 966 Pheasant Run. September 8, Linwood Lachie and Borg Henderson delivered to a city council a letter that I am speaking on behalf of tonight, on their behalf and mine. Namely, it is about the Planning and Zoning Commission failures to meet its responsibility with respect to changes that were made at the August 25th meeting in the original Woodbury subdivision, PUD. Tonight, city councilors do have an opportunity and an obligation, I think, to slow this process down until those failures are corrected and others that people have spoken to earlier. The Woodbury subdivision construction access street as publicly presented in March and August was to have been Mountain View via Sloniker. All studies and evaluations of the plan, as you heard, were based on those accesses. And up until 2 hours 20 minutes into the August 25th meeting, which lasted 2 hours and 35 meetings, all the studies that were talked about were those. Comments and discussions addressed that original construction plan. However, in response to Sloniker residents' justifiable pleas, the P&amp;Z commissioners, as they approved the Woodbury PUD, agreed to recommend approval of blocking the Sloniker access until Woodbury's public infrastructure is completed. How would the construction vehicles now reach Trail Road? The commissioners suggested via F Street and Orchard. A traffic impact study had been done on the other streets. When asked if such a study had been done for Orchard, a city engineer was told, said, "No, Orchard wasn't looked at." And as you heard tonight, no mention of Orchard was made. In other words, the commissioners agreed to blocking Sloniker, which in turn meant allowing F Street and Orchard to become Woodbury's construction route to Trail Road, without having required an F Street and Orchard traffic study. That's the point at which the P&amp;Z meeting should have postponed their vote. They did not, as you know. Would conducting a traffic impact study make a difference? I think it would. Consider the comparison. Sloniker Drive is two blocks long with 18 households. Orchard Avenue is one mile long, 57 households plus another approximately 180 that feed in to Orchard, and most of those have only Orchard as their exit street. Sloniker is wide, two lanes, parking on both sides, slightly sloped. Orchard's southern half is two lanes with parking on one side, and its northern half mile is narrow, including four blind hills where you cannot see what's coming until you're at the top of them. And that includes people like drivers, walkers, runners, kids, many of whom use this street constantly currently.
Would you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I'm just about done. Okay, so the commission quickly acquiesced to the pleas of Sloniker residents but failed to give the same consideration to Orchard residents, failed to compare the impacts of the two possible routes, failed to insist upon an F Street and Orchard study, including construction traffic, before they voted, and finally failed to ask about the feasibility of three possible alternative routes. One on Yeoman's, one going down Mountain View to Trail, and the third one possibly coming in just about a half a mile further than Sloniker and Yeoman's. Yes, and I'm done. So all I ask is that you postpone until you have a chance to take a look at these issues.
My name is Kayden Bloodso, and I live at 1148 Flanigan Creek Road. I'm a freshman at Moscow High School. And my main concern about this is there's not much research of how quickly the aquifers will fill. We are in a drought right now. The aquifers are very low, and I'm just concerned that they will run out and I don't know what we'll do after that. And yeah, if we run out of our water, there's not really much we can do. Our aquifers are gone. It's my one concern. I agree with a lot of what's been said tonight about this. Just my number one concern is the water is just wait for more studies to come out about this and then make a decision off that.
Thank you.
Oh, well, they run the hearing aid. My name is Mike Nealon, and I live at 1215 Sloniker. And I wanted to just talk about, a little bit about the closing of Sloniker. If I understood the... Was it Mike? That engineer of the presentation talked about closing it just till the infrastructure was done? When we were talking at the meeting on 8/25, I think we were talking, our desire would be into the construction so that we don't have a whole bunch of construction people using Sloniker. When Peekaboo Estates, which is Lanny Lane, was opened up, our traffic is on Sloniker is probably, I don't know, no studies, but let's say four times greater than it was before for that two blocks that that lady was talking about. But, and it's not people that are in the construction, because Peekaboo has been going on for roughly four years, I think, and they got 20 homes and they're two-thirds done of building. So this is all traffic that's coming in, coming up Mountain View over Sloniker and then over into Orchard area for homes up in that area. So our desire on Sloniker, and I'm speaking for maybe the people that are here, would be to keep that closed until, I think the desire was till the first house was sold in that first Woodbury Estates. So, you know, unless there was some other issue. And then the other, the secondary thing that came up after we had our comments was that about using Orchard, I don't know why it came up as Orchard. My thought was that people would use Mountain View to Trail and go around that way. The construction would be coming in through that way, the construction workers would be coming in through that secondary road that comes off a trail down into this first phase of Woodbury. So my desire, and I think those in the neighborhood, to keep Sloniker closed until, I think legally somebody buys the first piece of property.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ellen Johansson, 1212 Sloniker Drive, and I had written out a long thing that I was going to read tonight about traffic, and much of it has already been said this evening. And I think one of the things that's most disturbing about it is we don't want to pit one another against each other, you know? We really, we want this to be a community thing. And, you know, should it be Sloniker Drive that we access? Should it be Orchard? We can't make that decision, I don't think. I think we have to try to spread it out and make it, as I mentioned to Mr. Wince, be good neighbors. And I think that's what the goal of this is, because it appears that this is going to go through, and I do believe that there are some very good things about it, but I think the fact that the traffic study, to use 2006 and 2017 as the basis, we say increase by 1 percent, that's what our engineers said that they were using. If you look at where all the development has gone on in the last 10 years, primarily, it's been on the east side of Moscow, and that's more than 1 percent growth in that area. And then to read in the newspaper that we have kids that are nearly hit by cars because the traffic is so bad, that doesn't really jive at all with what the traffic study says, where we're A and B in those D Street and F Street. And I agree with what the woman said earlier, you didn't look at the corners of F Street and Orchard. You did not look at Mountain View and Sloniker. Those are the most impacted areas, not D and F. Yes, it will increase, you'll increase traffic there, there's no doubt. 2,500 cars a day when this development is done, there's no way, you can't impact those areas. So I urge you to look at the traffic studies and really, I implore you to consider what that means to those areas and not say, okay, we're going to pass... that means to those areas and, and not say, okay, we're going to pass it all, because you've got annexation, you've got change of land use. So look at all of those things before you rubber stamp it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johansson.
Chris Walker, 1115 Sloneaker Drive. Appreciate all the words that have been said. I'm kind of a broken record on talking about traffic and safety. But I just want, I, the council, I would, I would ask you to drive down Mountain View Road and take that 90-degree turn and see how that would be once we have logos and we have the traffic there. I just can imagine at a 35 mile an hour road, that 90-degree turn, that was not built for the traffic that we're going to have originally. So I have very much safety concerns on that turn. You know, I would make sure that with that left-hand turning lane, you know, that is put in place before everything else and that we're, we're taking that into consideration. We've lived there now for 12 years, and during that time, we've had cars hit the light pole that, or the, the pole right around that corner, take out all the lights. Our own house, we've had people take out two of our park strip trees on our street because they came around Lanny Lane too quick and whipped around, and if my kid was out in my driveway, he would have been killed. And I know that things like that happen, but we have a wide street. You know, again, the traffic studies are what has already been said, but I think there needs to be more consideration and slowdown and just understand how these neighborhoods were built. Sloneaker was not built, I know that it was going to be extended, but I don't think it was a neighborhood that was built to be a collector's street for 270 homes. I agree with this woman here about Orchard. My folks live on Pheasant Run, and that is one of the most dangerous roads there is. My kids walk to Grandma and Grandpa's house, they ride their bikes, and those hills are terrible. And so we have to figure out a way to not use Orchard, whether it's using Mountain View Road, which is a larger road, but having a connector road from Mountain View, you know, going around, not using Sloneaker, not using Orchard for their main development, for their big trucks, would be something that I would definitely consider. And just make sure that we, we understand how that works. But like I said, I've got young kids. Our street is, we've been blessed with a great opportunity to have a nice quiet street. I'm not against growth. I appreciate the effort that people have put in to develop a nice area, but we definitely have to consider the residents and the area and the safety. Mountain View Road is not, that corner is not a very safe road. And if we don't have sidewalks, we don't have those types of things in place before this gets put in, then with logos and everything else, it's going to be tough. So, that's my thoughts.
Chris.
Bill Voxman. Where do I live? 1400 Orchard Avenue. Full disclosure there. Certainly affected by increased traffic that would occur on Orchard, as well as on the other side of where we live, we have this beautiful unfettered view of Moscow Mountain. However, having spent in the long-distance past, at least five years on the Planning and Zoning Commission and eight years on the council, I think I've learned to be able to separate my own personal concerns with what might be best in the, in the general good. So I'm speaking from that point of view. I think a number of, well, lots of good points have been made tonight. I'm especially concerned about the, the fact that improvements on the roads, you know, it's questionable, when would they be made? They should be made sooner rather than, rather than, than, than later. Contrary, I'm sure to everybody who's here, I do favor the development. I like this development. I think, you know, we have to work around it to solve the problems that are, as a result of that, and traffic is, is a major one. I emphasize a lot with people on Sloneaker, having worked with them, I think, four years ago to propose an alternate to the current Peekaboo Division, which of course failed. But as Suzanne and other people have pointed out, somehow we have to share the inconveniences that are, as a result of this. And as the gentleman a couple of minutes ago proposed, certainly heavy equipment and that sort of thing, it would be very useful if they would use Mountain View to come into Trail then from that area rather than, than our street Orchard. Orchard, I'm sure you've all driven down it, and it's been adequately described with the, the hills, the lack of sidewalks, and the constant use of bikers and joggers and so forth on that section. So I hope those preliminary things could be worked out before the development actually, you know, before the earth starts getting moved, which I presume the engineers here in the city could do that, and maybe the council could require that the improvements to Mountain View and so forth be done in a very timely fashion to, to alleviate those kinds of, those kinds of problems. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up? Okay, Mark, I'll let you come back up, and we'll close the public hearing after you get done, sir. Talking about all these factors, please come on up here.
I, I would like to defer to Scott Sumner on, on some of the traffic issues, because I think that the study, the 1% growth was, was something that everyone decided was at least what we've been experiencing on those roads, so that was more than adequate. So, I mean, that's, that's what the experts said. So, any rate, connectivity. We're not an insular community here by any means. There's one, two, three, four, five, six connections that we've sought to do. That's one of the premises of new urbanism is connectivity, so that you're not creating traffic like bottleneck and so forth. So we tried to do whatever we could on that. Sloneaker, it said it's not a connector. I'd like to think that it's not, but it's, it is a connector. If you look at the master plan, it's got Lanny Lane coming from the east. It's, you know, I think that we're going to make as low of an impact as possible on it. But I think that, that at the end of the, Sloneaker, we're not breaking into a curb, there's just a barricade there where it's obvious that Sloneaker was intended to go The neighborhood meeting, which by the way, I think was the greatest idea for, I think it really works well. I mean, it really gives a chance to meet with people. And I had several other meetings with, with key people, that, you know, some of our, the neighbors and so forth. But out of that came the Trail, the Trail Access that's up here, this right here. That was not a requirement of the city. That was a volunteered thing. It was like, hey, we can do this and lower the impact here. So I think it's going to work really well. And, yeah, we can kind of keep, keep all the heavy equipment, all the concrete, everything that, you know, is just a, a real nuisance coming on that road. That's the intention there. Lastly, I'd just like to say that I, I think that this, a lot of times, we don't want to have development, because it's just, it just, it takes away from the equity of what you've got there. I really think that we're going to be building equity for our neighborhood here. So I, I think that it's going to benefit Sloneaker. It's not going to take anything away from them. I think it's going to add to it. That's, that's my opinion, so. But, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Can I, can we ask him a couple of questions?
Sure. Go ahead, Maureen.
I'm familiar with Orchard, and it is really hilly, and it's a really, it's a rough street to add, and there's people running and bikes and kids and that stuff. Have you thought about, is there a reason not to do Mountain View? I hate to go after anybody who's on Mountain View, but is there a way to go to Mountain View, which doesn't seem to have as many houses on it, not as many people, and it's better constructed?
Now, how do you mean go to Mountain View?
So that instead of, is the entrance into Trail. Instead of using Orchard to Trail, you'd use Mountain View into Trail.
That's, that's, hang on a second. Hang on a second. If you're going to speak, we have, you have.
I'm not, I'm not, so Mountain View is out here on, it's down the south, and then it wraps around out on the east side of this.
Yeah, Orchard's on the west side.
Right. And so, it sits there, it sits between the two. You know, at this point, the subdivision sits between Orchard on this side and Mountain View there, and Trail runs between them. My question is, based on what people have said and my own observations with respect to Orchard, is that it's a rough street to add a lot of construction to. And so my question is, is would there be, would there not, is there any reason not to go on Mountain View, which is a better road for construction trucks?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. I, that's what we're going to, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're going to recommend that, you know, like, you take this route. You know, I'm going to tell the concrete guys, you know, you don't go this way. You go out on Mountain View and around and on Trail. I mean, I think that that's, yeah, we, we want to avoid, just, just because there's more Sloneaker people fighting for it. I mean, everyone's, Sloneaker and Orchard are equally issues. So I, I think we want to keep the construction traffic off of Orchard just as much as Sloneaker.
Okay, so I just want to make a point of clarification. And I'm not sure that the road that is going to be used for construction.
Yes.
And the block off at Sloneaker, isn't, the block off at Sloneaker is not going to open up until you're done with all the infrastructure?
That's correct.
And there's a sidewalk, and there's curbs and those things.
That's correct. That's the idea.
So that what Sloneaker really gets is Sloneaker starts to get extended with people actually building houses, right?
Yes, I mean, the, the, what we've worked out is like the heavy equipment, the building of the, of the.
Infrastructure.
Streets of infrastructure, right?
Okay.
I mean, at that point, I think it becomes a, you know, a, a, the need to have a public access for people that are, that are going there.
Mark, you need to put your microphone back up. This is being recorded.
I'm sorry, Gary.
Can I, can I ask one other question? When someone's buying a lot, do they get a choice of houses that they want? Can they walk in and say, I want a different format? Are, are the houses pretty much planned community?
They're, they're really, they're going to be planned. I mean, you know, we'll, we'll alter them based on what's popular, but I mean, I think we're going to, we're coming out with, you know, the, this house on this spot.
Okay.
That's part of the HOA.
Yeah.
312 areas, Maureen.
No, I, I thought it was.
I'll go to Brandy next.
And these are just two quick follow-ups to Maureen's. Can, is it possible, someone had asked here, if that Sloneaker could remain closed until the first house is sold? Is that feasible in the development?
It's certainly possible, yeah. I think that's possible.
Okay. And then my next follow-up question, when, do you think it's, also, do you think it's feasible if you ask all the construction guys to take Mountain View? Will they? And is there any way to?
That's possible.
I mean, you know, unless somebody's out there like fining them, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you can't stand out there directing them, so how can you sort of assure everyone that, that they're going to do that?
Right.
What do you think the likelihood is?
Just like you do everything else and stay on.
Levi, did you have something?
Well, I, I was just going to, that, that's what I was going to try to clear up, because we can keep Sloneaker blocked off, yes, but then our recommendation, and it has already to the one contractor that we've been in contact, is to take Mountain View out to Trail. But that's as, you, we can't block off Orchard.
Right.
You know, to, to, yeah, to them. So that's, that's going to be a constant, constant thing, though, is that's, that's the path that we want our contractors.
So you might expect that you will need to follow up with them sometimes to say?
Regularly.
And, and you're okay with doing that?
Well, thank you, Mark and Levi. I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:02. With that, I will turn it over to council. Who would like to start?
Well, sure.
Okay, Sandra.
I'd like to wrap it up, but all right. I am, I certainly do have a lot of the concerns that folks out there are sharing. I worry about the traffic studies not really hitting Orchard. As someone who will not walk her dog out on Orchard anymore because it's so awful, super big concerns there, and I understand that going to Mountain View would help, but I am worried about the impact in that part of the neighborhood. I also thought of the meeting we had, I believe on Monday, last Monday, about the traffic concerns at the school and how we're trying to remedy that right now and how this might add to it. It's a lovely, it's a lovely plan, and I'm not against the plan. I don't want that, but I am worried that, like many people said out there, that maybe we don't have all the ducks in the road and make the right moves forward yet on this. Happy to continue to talk about this even tonight and find out where people are, but those are my initial concerns. It does have to do with traffic. I'm not as concerned about the water simply because I do know steps are trying to be taken there, which I appreciate a great deal. But that's, that's a tough neck of Moscow right now about how everything gets bottled up. And I, I am the first to tip my hat to Mike and say, I know I am not a traffic engineer. And I appreciate those traffic studies, but I don't know that they fulfill the questions that we need answers to move forward.
Bill, did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Okay. Uh, Maureen.
So I would, I don't know, Mike, this is your job or somebody else's job, but one of the stories that are coming up or the themes is this rapid growth. Do we have any kind of, do you have any history in terms of how fast Moscow's growing and, and such, and, and the water consumption and the rest of that? I know that Bill talked about, you know, we've had 35% increase since 92, and we have a 14% decrease in the water usage. That's not, that's just saying that conservation has done some helpful things. But my question is, is do we have something on that that you can talk to us about growth?
Well, I certainly have some information on growth, historic annual growth rates that I could provide. So this would be just a chart of just annual growth. You can see really hovered around the 1%, you know, 1.25, somewhere around there. But looking from 2000 to 2020, we've got 0.89%, so it's, it's around 1% slightly under. Actually, the last 10 years, 2010 to 2020, we've had 0.67. And that's the, the least amount of, of growth as far as annual growth rate we've had over the last 60 years. I also have a, a chart, kind of hard to see. This is, uh, single-family home starts every year. So you can see it's really fluctuated, really the last 10 years with a great recession occurring in 2008. We've dipped way down and slowly, you know, coming back up. Historic, uh, single-family growth has been about 40 per year. So back in 2009, we were around 20, and we've slowly been increasing. 2020, we had 44 single-family home starts, but you can really see the, the fluctuation that's occurred over the years. You know, back in the 80s, we had high interest rates, and that resulted in a lot of the trends that you see back then. But really, I think something to, to drive home here is that just because there's a certain number of lots that are approved, doesn't mean that we're going to develop those tomorrow. We've traditionally had 300, 400 lots in our inventory, but there's a whole lot of market factors that contribute to whether or not a developer moves forward with a project. And a lot of times, they wait till the market conditions are right before they'll put the infrastructure in and start selling homes. I mean, we have some subdivisions, Ridgeview Estate 2nd, that's been approved since 2012, 2013. That's just starting to break ground this year. Peterson 2nd was approved, that's at the end of Baker Street. That's been approved since 2010, hasn't started construction on that subdivision. And so there are a number of subdivisions that you can point to that just hasn't been ripe for the developer to be in construction on those, and, and doesn't mean that, you know, all the, the cost of land, the cost of materials, the cost of labor, that's all going to magically disappear at some point, and we're going to have 160, uh, single-family homes that are constructed in a year. It's really going to follow the trends and, and I wouldn't say change dramatically between what the trends that we've been seeing.
Hang on a second. Brandy.
And following that and looking at the population growth, which has not been very rapid, I guess you could say, it's, but we have, we experienced pretty low population growth. And, and looking at these, that would make sense, just to kind of extrapolate from what you were saying, that even with its, you know, we've, we've been talking recently about a lot, a large number with many different developments, but at this pace, that's likely to take five-plus years before we actually see those built out. I mean, it's going to happen over time. If we're seeing, on average, it's 40 a year, no reason to think that that might change, except for the fact that we're probably behind, and that's probably why we have such a housing shortage right now and why prices are so high. So there might be. So there might be a little bit of catch-up time, but you, what I'm hearing is you probably expect this is going to take a number of years for...
Yeah, I mean, even full...
Not only this, but just others, just in the context of hearing what some people are concerned about for, for these to all be built out for various reasons.
Correct, yeah. I mean, even full build out of the subdivision, two hundred and seventy lots at the average, just the time it takes to absorb, um, those forty single-family homes per year, you know, we're looking at maybe six, seven years before that would, would happen. And that's assuming that the road, all the improvements are put into place, the infrastructure's put into place, uh, to start building homes. I mean, the developer is still likely one to two years out from the infrastructure before they even start building homes in the subdivision, so.
And you're talking about one development? In that example?
Well, and I think too, when we talk, thinking about the water and we see this, I mean, this expectation that these take place over a number of years is really kind of staying on track, too, of the number of additional homes that are being built to accommodate that less than one percent population growth each year. As far as, you know, in the discussion about developments and water, this is such a relatively small impact, and I think you referred to, there's already in the code, the requirements for the fixtures to be low-flow and, and conserving, and hearing the, um, from P-BAC, the successes with conservation, maybe the direction to go is to be more aggressive with our conservation measures across the board, not just with these seventy-five or these two hundred, but really looking at our water rate system and trying to address, um, you know, some of the, especially that outdoor irrigation, and I would be interested in looking at a more aggressive rate system to have a, a bigger impact on our aquifers and our conservation than thinking that we're gonna do that by trying to kind of hold up a development or a few developments. One other thing I would say about that, too, is, uh, oh, that, this development actually is the first one that I've heard from lately that actually does seem to be addressing the water issues with, without having the lawns on each one. So I'm, I'm very impressed by that and think this is a much better, this is one that I do see addressing water more than I've seen with some others. I have, I think the traffic issues, I, I understand the concern about growth and water, but having the bigger historical view, I think this is not very out of line with what we've seen and we've been able to, to manage that. I think the specific traffic issues on this, that's where I'm like, uh, not so sure about the older data, um, if there should be some time taken just to be sure that we're moving forward in a, um, logical way.
Your Honor.
A couple of, uh, councillors haven't spoke yet, and I'm gonna go to Ann, uh, come back to you in a minute, Bill. Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a question. A couple people brought this up, talking about two thousand six and two thousand seventeen data and using one percent growth estimates. Maybe this is a question for you, Scott? Can you speak to that and why those dates were selected?
If, if I may, Your Honor.
Bill?
Um, so, when we were reviewing the project and we anticipated that it'd have fairly significant traffic volume generation, we asked them to do a traffic impact study. Um, as part of that, you would do a turn, turning movement analysis at those intersections of F and D, which were the primary focus, 'cause the, the plat that is before you does not have any roadway connection really to Orchard south of, of Lanny. Um, and so that northern portion of, of Orchard that's in the porous condition, we knew will need to be assessed, will need to be addressed at the time that the development actually connects to that portion of the roadway. The primary concern was that because this had primary access off of Sloniker, that we would see the majority of this subdivision before use volume going down to Mountain View, and our concern were the first four-way intersections. The roadway section itself can handle the volume. We recognize the lack of pedestrian facilities, which is why we made the recommendation for them to proportionally share in the cost of installation of pedestrian route. But we did not have, um, but traditionally, for the intersection studies, you would do a turning movement analysis, but we were in the middle of summer. That would not be reflective of traffic patterns during the school year. So we, we pulled our most current turning movements that were collected during the school year and then had them forecast one percent growth per year on top of those numbers to estimate current values. We have not grown at one percent in the last twenty years. We've grown at less than one percent, and much of that growth, I mean, other than the Peekaboo Estates, it hasn't happened up in the north part of the community either. Um, most of it's happened either in Rolling Hills additions to the south or Indian Hills additions to the south. Um, and so we felt, felt comfortable. If the traffic study showed a marginal level of service, we probably would've said, "We wanna get a current count", but we anticipated that the, the growth factor that was applied to those over-estimated traffic volumes at the intersections, um, and then the service levels remained either A or B. Uh, so they weren't anywhere near something that we felt was, was gonna reduce it to a unsatisfactory service level. We are responding to requests from the district to a ten-to-fifteen-minute concern at the intersection. Service levels are averaged over that peak hour. And so even with, and we've measured the maximum queuing is twelve vehicles on the South Leg and Mountain View during the AM concentrated drop-off time, that still is getting people through at, at service level of, of A or B at that time. And so we did not anticipate that there was any, any additional concern that we'd have, uh, that needed to be incorporated in that traffic study, and we're comfortable the numbers that were utilized.
Okay. I, I mostly feel good about that. I struggle a bit just because we do have some projected growth, right, with the low-gas project, and, and so, I don't know. I appreciate the explanation of the one percent and looking at where the new developments happened, but it concerns me a bit. That's it.
Gina.
Okay. So I heard some themes. Water, we hear you. We hear you. We're working on it. P-BAC is working on it. Um, that is by no means meant as a statement of, "It's not an issue now. We can, need to continue on the conservation and the, um, attention that we're paying to water", but it is not an immediate problem. I also do not want to give it to our children to deal with, so, there. Housing, um, someone mentioned the fact that we have such a need for low-income housing, and we do definitely, but we also have no less an important need of housing of this magnitude or this level because of our major employers and their needs as far as executives and, and employees who can afford maybe a more expensive house. So I would say this doesn't answer housing as a universal, um, solution, but it does answer housing on one end. Okay. The traffic, and I, I, I'm gonna need one or both of you to talk me off of the, um, idea of old data. Talk to me about that, please. That feels, I mean, I, I'm, I'm hearing it, and I, I don't know how to rationalize it in my head, that two thousand...
Six and seventeen.
Six and seventeen are, well, seventeen seems current to me, but then again, so, so help me. Help me, please, wrap my head around the fact that this is still valid and is useful in this situation. Please.
Who wants to take a mic or...
Yeah, I mean, to just kind of repeat what I said, I mean, we needed traffic counts that were collected during the school year to accurately reflect the intersection's operations at that time.
Okay.
The most current data we had for the D Street intersection was in two thousand and six. Um, we hadn't done a, a turning movement study, and that was done at the time that the school district was requesting the four-way stop sign to be installed at that intersection.
Yeah.
Um, those counts were then, every leg of that, of volume entering that intersection was increased compounded one year...
Okay.
One percent per year annually to forecast an estimated twenty twenty-one traffic volume at that intersection, and then the new development, full build-out, was layered on top of that.
Perfect.
And the intersection continued to accommodate that level of traffic volume, only dropping to a service level B was the lowest on one leg during the PMP power.
Okay. I do appreciate you repeating that, because sometimes you do have to hit me with these stick twice before I understand.
No problem.
Um, I, I, I do have a concern as well about traffic, and I wanna thank Mr. Voxman for, uh, giving me this next, um, statement about spreading the inconvenience. Um, things are changing. We are growing and we are, um, experiencing change, and there are gonna be things like waits at a crosswalk, at a four-way stop. There are gonna, there are gonna be more cars on our roads, and we, we need to embrace growth and recognize that it's important to our long-term survival and, um, and all approach, and I wanna thank Ellen for her statement about being a good neighbor, um, approach this in the way that Moscow has always approached challenges, as a community with our neighbor and acceptance right out in front. I, I believe very strongly that this is, is important, right now especially.
Marine had a question.
I don't know if this, who this goes to, but, um, Ann gave a lot of information about, HB three eighty-nine. Great. And I just wanted to make sure what impact that has on the developments that we are making here and how the impact that will have on the city budget.
Well, in the aggregate, uh, House Bill three eighty-nine does limit, uh, new growth and annexations to ninety percent of its value, whereas previous to this year, we could take a hundred percent. The, that does have an, a overall, uh, reduction, because when we used to be able to take a hundred percent, you can only take ninety percent. However, historically, in our city budget, um, new growth is somewhere less than a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, in the overall scheme of things, it's not huge. Additionally, what it does, because it, if the taxes for new growth are assessed or we're able, the city is able to take ninety percent of those, then what happens is that ten percent gets levied out to the rest of the assessed properties. So, it's the same thing as the homeowner's exemption. You have the homeowner's exemption increased from a hundred percent to a hundred and twenty-five, excuse me, a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. What it does is it spreads that out over the rest of the assessed properties. So, an individual homeowner will feel very little to that. The new, the new properties that are being assessed at ninety percent, those property owners are not only paying a ninety percent tax bill, it's being levied out among all of the assessed properties.
Randy.
Gary, so you said that, um, traditionally, the amount of new construction only, uh, comes to like a hundred thousand dollars in increased tax revenue?
Without looking at the old budget books, that sounds about right.
So, that would be like a ten thousand doll, in that rough thing, that would be ten thousand dollars lost that's spread out among all of the levy.
Yeah, mathematically, it would seem to be that way. Of course, as you just saw in the housing starts, it waxes and wanes depending on what your, your building is.
But in general, that's just, that gives me good perspective of the amount of money that we're talking about and the impact it would have on an individual. And then, would there be any danger in, uh, reaching the cap imposed by HB three eighty-nine, beyond which we cannot tax?
Well, you saw the growth rates that we've experienced the last twenty years of less than one percent.
Yeah.
Eight percent is huge.
Okay.
Isn't there some question as to the future of three eighty-nine, anyway?
I would not bet that any changes will be made if, if the current tenor of the legislature, I would be surprised if there weren't additional restrictions placed on local government's ability to tax property.
But I'd also like to note that, actually, when we started discussions about annexation and also just doing our budget, we talked about three eighty-nine, and we just decided that while there was at least one entity in Idaho that did a moratorium on construction, that we had kind of decided then that we were still gonna go with allowing development here and not just stopping all of it. And so it's not, and then it's hard to sit here today and have allowed a variety of different annexations to happen, and now suddenly impose it on this one.
Discussions of moratorium based on three eighty-nine, uh, were vetted out by all of the city attorney's group, and it's tough to say that the restrictions of three eighty-nine create such a danger that it, uh, would warrant a moratorium. Of course, it's up to the individual elected bodies, but as you say, I believe there was one county or one fire district that, uh, decided that they would attempt to do that. I'm not sure how that ended.
I'll put a little twist on that, too. Three eighty-nine, uh, was one of those bills that nobody really understood, including the state comptroller, didn't really know, and so when we were down for Association of Cities in June, uh, we were getting a bunch of what-if scenarios because nobody really knew. So the point I'm trying to make here, ladies and gentlemen, is that, geez, you know, before you shoot the rifle, let's see what happens. Let's let the dust settle a little bit and see how things work out. It may or may not, may not be that big of a deal. It may be, who knows, but for us here in Moscow, it certainly doesn't look like that's the direction that we're headed. Now, if we had exponential growth, I talked to one, uh, mayor in a town that has nothing to do with this public hearing, by the way, but had, has to do with this conversation on three eighty-nine, and they were putting, and this how, this city had ninety-nine hundred people in it, and they had a one thousand track home development coming in, a thousand homes. That, ladies and gentlemen, would be a disaster. Because of all the different infrastructure, schools, fires, police, so on and so forth. And I was just thinking to myself, man, I couldn't believe it. That is growth that we don't wanna see, and we won't, we, we've never seen that and experienced that in Moscow, and we won't see that in Moscow. I just wanted to put that out there for you. I couldn't really believe it.
Yeah, I, I think that the one that you're referring to, Marine, it's because they were growing so hugely that they were in danger of exceeding that cap.
Sure, yeah.
Um, which, that's why I was asking, are we in any danger of approaching that cap? That, that was the reason for my asking that question.
Bill, can I ask you one more question?
Okay, go ahead, Marine.
I don't know who at the city, whether, I don't know who it is, but I would like someone to talk just a little bit about P-BAC. What P-BAC is, who belongs to P-BAC, and the timeline of P-BAC making a decision, because I'm not sure everybody understands that, and so we all keep sitting up here saying, "Oh, P-BAC's gonna make a decision. P-BAC's gonna make a decision and make..." And, and then, what's the impact between P-BAC and this development or any other development? So if somebody can say what that is, it helps put the water issue in context.
Well, with P-BAC, uh, Place, Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee is what it is. They don't make a decision on any government regulatory thing, what we will do or what we will not do. That's voted on by the people that are in power, whether it be the county, whether it be the cities. Uh, so that would, and I'll, uh, Tyler, speak a little bit more about this, but there's elected officials of the municipalities and the counties that make those decisions. You wanna add to that, Tyler?
Certainly, Your Honor, I'd be happy to. So the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, um, has had several iterations over the years. First, for decades and decades, it's been known, ever since the area was settled, that there was a water issue. There were artesian wells initially, the, the wells rapidly declined, and so basically since the area was settled, it was known that we would have to, we'd have to be looking for alternate water supplies. One of the things that Gina mentioned that I think is an important part of this conversation, um, I'm very encouraged to hear the focus on water. I think that there's no bigger issue that we can focus on, but one of the things that Gina said that I do think is important is we don't have an immediate water issue as far as, we're not saying, "Hey, it's day zero, five years out" or something like that. We, we've got time to work on this, and part of any, part of the growth of any city is developing water resources. That's just, that's part of the growth of any city. So the, so, in recognition of that need, the, the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee pulled together all the major pumping entities in the basin, and so you have the City of Moscow, the City of Pullman, Washington State University, the University of Idaho, Leita and Whitman Counties, with minor participation from some of the smaller communities as well. You have, you have Palouse, um, that, that also contributes a little bit to P-BAC. And then we have ex-official members on the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee with, with representatives from the Department of Ecology in the State of Washington and from the Idaho Division of Water Resources, which are the two state entities that are charged with water resource development within the respective states. And so the, what, what the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee is charged with doing is studying, analyzing, and working toward an alternate water supply, because it is a common pool resource. It's something that we all are drawing from this resource, and it, and it will take some collective action to make sure that not one entity disproportionately bears the burden of stabilizing the aquifer and developing additional water resources. And so, P-BAC has really pivoted from a research stage, which was a very, a very important stage that went on for many, many years with cooperation of our universities and several, um, professionals and experts in our area and region, to an action phase. And so in two thousand sixteen, there was the alternate water, uh, the alternate water study, the alternate water supply study, and that study generated four alternatives. So the next step was to take a look at those four alternatives and try and narrow down and select an alternative. Uh, we have a firm, Alta Science and Engineering, that we've contracted with currently. The City of Moscow's administering that contract on behalf of P-BAC, and they are working toward, they're working on filling the data gaps and making a recommendation. And so that includes a very much more in-depth study of things like water rights, coordination with fish... with fisheries, construction feasibility, operation and maintenance costs, overall project costs, all of the things that we need to be looking at in order to make that decision, Mr. Mayor, and that timeline. Currently, we have research that will go through spring of this year, through the end of March of this year, and then they will take that information that's generated through that study and draft a final report that should come before the city council sometime probably fall of next year, is the timeline that we're looking at for that.
Just for clarification, Tyler, you meant it's going to be the spring of 2022, right?
Excuse me, 2022, that's correct, yes.
And this, oh, sorry.
And so, the other part of that is, is that the impact on the water source by this, by this development, can you talk about that at all? I mean, is it going to impact the decision on how we're going to deal with an alternative water supply?
It will not impact the decision on an alternate water supply. When, when you're looking at the volumes of water that we're talking about, the mayor mentioned something that I think is important, is that in 1992, there was a groundwater management plan that was established, that established some ceilings and goals for water usage. And despite significant growth in the area, we've had a decrease in the amount of water we're using. And so, we really have, we have excellent per capita numbers here in Moscow. We have some of the lowest numbers in the state, if not the lowest numbers in the state for per capita usage. We do really well, but that's not to say there's not more that we can do. But when you look at the scope of the, of the issue that we have, if, if they were to stop all development in 1962 and say, nobody else is moving to Moscow again, the aquifer was declining at two feet per year versus the little bit over half a foot per year that we're currently seeing the decline. So, if we'd stopped any development at 1962 and said, no one else comes in, you'd still be looking for an alternate water supply. That's, that's just our reality, is that we have to develop alternate water supplies.
And just one more question on that. Mr. Wentz talked about the fact that he's already built or started the construction on a similar project in Pullman, and they, do they use the same aquifer that we use?
We have, yeah, there's an aquifer system, where there's a shallow aquifer that Moscow was the only pumping entity, the only major pumping entity in that aquifer, and that's called the Wanapum. The deeper aquifer where we draw the majority of our water in the last couple of years, almost the entirety of our water is the Grand Ron, and that is the exact same aquifer that Pullman draws their water from, as well as Washington State University and the University of Idaho.
Thank you.
Randy.
Thank you. So, when, I just wanted to clarify, when you talked about the report being expected in March of 2022 by Alta, it, it's not necessarily going to answer all the questions about when, how many years we have the water, but it's going to be identifying our path forward for what they say is the most feasible or recommended alternate to start getting, working towards. We're all talking about it, and we're waiting for that report to say, okay, this is the direction we go based on their study. Is that how I'm understanding it?
That's correct. Just with one point of clarification, that the end of March of 2022 is when they will finish the research portion that we have currently identified. We brought before city council, the last, actually, it was on the consent agenda at this meeting, an extension of that contract because one of the things that, we really have to be as thorough. This is, the, the nice thing is that we're not Cape Town, we don't have a day zero coming up in a few months, so we have time to be very deliberate in this process. And so, as we go through the process of the research, it's likely that we'll find other data gaps that need to be filled in order to make a very informed decision as to what we're going to pursue, because none of these are going to be simple and none of these are going to be very cheap. And so, it's important that we really take that seriously and, and look at these. So, so the, the current identified research will be complete at the end of March of 2022, with a final report expected later in the fall of 2022.
And the expectation is that no matter what happens in that report in the spring or the report in the fall, one or the other of these alternatives will be pursued. It's just a matter of which, which one.
That's correct.
And that's already been, I mean, those four have already been vetted for years and years and years, and we're very far in that process. It's just a matter of which one is the one after all this careful study and deliberation, but one of these is going to be pursued.
At that point, they will identify the one or two most feasible, and we will actually start the process of permitting environmental studies, funding, et cetera, to further narrow that down.
With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, it's like sitting down eating an elephant. It takes a while. When this plan comes in, whatever that alternative plan is, when we get that point at the end of 2022, it's going to take nine to 12 years to get the thing completely done, and it is going to be expensive. But what a beautiful time to start working on that infrastructure now and getting the grants and the work forward, because we do have Idaho Water Resources working with this, and it's going to be a government thing, and yes, it's going to be spending, yes, there's going to be a bunch of different grants. But we've got to strike also while the iron is hot on this and be a for-running community that can bring this forward for our citizens. We get that solved, and that'll be a water issue that you won't have to worry about for a century.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, the
Or longer.
The point I wanted to make sure was clear, too, is there are these, everybody's talking about the four alternatives, but they're like four potential solutions, and we're not trying to find, they're, they're, they've been identified, this has been worked on for a long time. We're in that phase of really trying to hone in on which one is the best one, and be careful about choosing the final.
Randy, some of those solutions, one of those solutions may cross over with another one of the solutions, so there's kind of a hybrid of, of two different things to get one result.
And I hear you saying, we have time.
We have time.
Right, which, I think that's, there's some, people wondering, how much time do we have?
I'm going to go to Gina.
Can I, can I please go back to this other issue? The other one we're talking about?
Which one's, traffic?
All of this Woodbury something or other.
Oh, you want to talk, you want to talk about the, the public hearing that we've been dealing with?
The whole issue of why we're here to start with, yeah. Mark, or Mike, will you come up here, please? So, so earlier we were talking about the, the improvements, the 50% improvements on Mountain View and, and that whole crossing over
Turn lane.
Yeah, that whole thing. Can you, can you tell me, can you help me understand if that's kind of the timing of that, and is that possible to, to, to increase the safety of Mountain View if we're going to be using it as we've discussed for this big truck entrance and that kind of thing? Can you talk to me about the feasibility there? And, and maybe, maybe that's, Mr. Wentz has to get back up. But, but I want to talk about the potential for having that be sooner in the process.
Do you want it done now?
Yeah.
Do you want it done now?
I just want to talk about it. I don't necessarily want it done this very second, but I want to talk about it.
But I think he's already, he's already made a commitment that says that he will, that the infrastructure will be in place and that the turning lane will have been decided before they start the construction. Am I mistaken?
I think Mike said that we could direct that, we want that done before, that we want that timing to happen before anything else proceeds, which
Okay, is this what we got up here?
Everybody's got their hand up now.
Well, yeah, I think, I think I hear Gina, oh, go ahead.
Think about number two, Mike. Bill?
Yeah, it was our expectation that the improvements in Mountain View would be complete in conjunction with the first phase of the subdivision. So, that was the expectation and would be the left turn lane if it was deemed to be warranted by the traffic study, just to have that in place and completed prior to having the additional traffic volumes on Mountain View. So, it was our expectation that it'd be wrapped up into the development agreement. It would be along with all the other public improvements that they'd be required to complete, and they'd have to complete those prior to the issuance of construction permits and subdivision.
Do you mean before they even start in the infrastructure, like the construction vehicles going in there?
No. You're not, you know, for, for construction vehicles, the volume is going to be relatively low except for limited periods where they're importing rock material. I mean, there'll be mobilization of earth movers, that'll be kind of a somewhat one-time event. Mass grading will take place. I don't believe they're going to be exporting any materials offsite. I think it's going to be relatively balanced grading exercise. They will be importing rock, they'll be importing concretes and pipe and utility materials as they get through that process, but we would not expect that they would be required to mitigate that prior to the subdivision. What we are looking at is the, the larger traffic volumes that we'd expect, the, you know, 700 vehicles a day that will be utilizing the roadway at that first phase, roughly 10 trips per household. We want to have it in place before that level of traffic volumes, but we generally would not require that in advance of subdivision development. We would, we would package that with all of the other public improvements that are required to be completed prior to permit issuance.
Prior to permitting the building, you said? Building of, sorry, the, I'm just still trying to understand, so not, not, it wouldn't be required before the infrastructure construction happens. It would be required
We would anticipate
Four houses are built or at the same time?
We'd be anticipating it to be happening concurrently. It's, it's part of the infrastructure development.
That's, it's a normal process to have it
Correct. If we have any offsite improvements, Eddington is a similar project where the council required offsite improvements, those will be done concurrently with the infrastructure development, and will require to be completed prior to permit issuance or securities placed. If they want to defer it for a short period of time, typically the development agreement allows deferral of up to nine months depending upon weather conditions, or to allow them to begin home construction prior to the completion of the subdivision improvements, the public infrastructure. But we'd anticipate that would be done the same fashion, that that would be an obligation they would have to get completed prior to permit issuance.
All right.
Maureen.
I just want to say, I think that I really appreciate all the work that you all have done in this Woodbury project, and it seems to me that it, it moves us to a new level of development here, and I am impressed with the idea of the consciousness with respect to the use of water and conservation and green space and creating a community that's open to others, but also to people that are in there. And so, thank you for all the work that you did on that, and it looks like a great project. I also wanted to say thank you to all the people from the city, Mike, everyone else that actually spent so much time and energy to bring this forward to us. And I think that we all have those concerns, but we're moving forward on this, and I appreciate everyone's work and the thoughtfulness of that, and that it's not a kind of a quick decision. We've all been struggling with this for years.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, that's my motion. Hold on, let me get it.
Number one.
Say thank you to everybody here.
That is my motion.
There you are, right there.
Move that we approve the annexation ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay, more, more discussion.
Randy.
So, all right, back to discussion. So, the traffic still, so the traffic studies. I understand about the, I, I got it with the years and everything like that. So, do you think there would be much of an impact, I mean, we don't know yet, with this change in the traffic pattern with the four-way stop, where we're not going to have the turning lanes anymore? Is it, is there any reason you think that we now, school is in session, we have that change in the pattern, I don't know how long it would take, how difficult it is, but to do another study of that and just be sure we're still not at a D?
So, just to clarify, you want to know if you would like to require the app to conduct a new traffic study with actual current turning movements?
I am asking
I'm just trying to understand the question.
No, that's okay. From your, in your opinion, from knowing what has happened with the traffic study, how it came out as a B, it was based on the 1%, the development since that time hasn't really happened in the area that would be adding traffic to it, so it seems valid. However, the, we just recently are changing that four-way stop that previously had turning lanes, which all these studies are based on, to now it doesn't have turning lanes, so things will be presumably backed up more. Is that enough to indicate the need for an updated study that
We don't believe so. On a four-way stop, the left turn lanes really don't give you much additional volume at an intersection. Every vehicle has to stop anyway and, and oftentimes adds confusion and delay. So, we don't expect that that's the temporary, what we're experimenting with is a temporary removal of those left turn lanes. If it were to remain permanent, we don't think it would have a, a significant impact in the reduction of intersection capacity in a four-way configuration. It's different when you're looking at a signalized intersection, or if you're looking at a, a two-way stop controlled through roadway where you have left or right turn lanes, but we have a four-way stop controlled intersection, you have limited, you gain limited capacity by adding those turn lanes.
And I hear about the concern with the Orchard traffic study, but hearing the timing of things, and especially that the developers are going to have the construction workers access Mountain View, I don't know that there's any thing to really study at this point because nothing's going to be dumping out onto Orchard even in this phase at all. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Typically, we wouldn't conduct traffic studies just on construction access activity. It's a temporal, short-term, not necessarily concentrated at the peak AM and PM hour activity. And so, we, we traditionally would not do a traffic study just for construction vehicle access.
Everybody squared away, we're all good?
Questions on the floor.
Thinking through some things.
Yep.
Okay. Maureen made a motion, and Gina seconded that motion to approve the annexation ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings that be read by title and published by summary. I will start to roll with Anne.
Yeah, I feel a bit conflicted about this. There are some elements that I really like about it. One thing that wasn't touched on tonight are that all of the lots are ADU permissible, which have, those are accessory dwelling units, which I really like as a design feature. I feel like I have also heard a lot of the overwhelming public opposition from neighbors and concerns about this being in line with the comprehensive plan, and I share those concerns, and so I'm going to vote no. No.
No, okay, Brandy. Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Aye.
Okay, that passes four to one. Okay, reaction number two?
Your Honor.
Oh, wait a minute, I got to read this.
Oh, yeah, you do, sorry.
It's an ordinance, sorry. Ordinance number 2021 day 16, an ordinance to the city of Moscow Municipal Corporation of the state of Idaho, providing that the land described in section one of this ordinance and generally shown as exhibit eight attached here, too, and incorporated by this reference being annexed to the city of Moscow, providing that provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after passage approval and publication according to law. Now, Gina.
I move that we approve the proposed comprehensive plan, land use designation resolution, and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
Okay, we've got a motion by Gina and a second by Maureen, to approve the proposed comprehensive planned land use designation resolution, adapt the Planning and Zoning Commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria. I'll start to roll with Maureen.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
And Anne.
Name.
Okay, action number three.
Can I just ask a really quick question? I just want to get this clarification with you, Bill. So, that things such as using Mountain View, not instead of Orchard, and some of those other conditions, like closing off Slonaker until the first house is built, will that go in someplace? Will it be in the plans that you put together? What's, where's that going to be reflected?
So, not, so just to start off with, I mean, you have the conditions of approval that are being recommended to you this evening. Those are tied to the subdivision plat, approval, because that's generally where the city can mitigate the impacts of the development. Blocking off is the third condition there, is blocking off access to Slonaker until the subdivision infrastructure is completed. Are you looking for something else that's not reflected in those conditions?
I think there was some discussion in terms of whether or not the first house could be constructed before that, before then it's opened up, Slonaker's opened up from then on.
So, you could modify that third condition if you wished. The completion of the public infrastructure and the acceptance of that as a public road would be the point at which we would recommend that that barrier would be removed. Having a public road that's accepted and we keep a barricade and are forcing potential home buyers or others through a temporary access up to trail is not what we'd recommend. We recommend, like any other subdivision typically, and, and most subdivisions don't have the benefit of having the public infrastructure accessed in a different route. You know, the Rolling Hills, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh have all had construction access right through those existing prior neighborhoods as the, those neighborhoods heads have grown. But once that street has been accepted and is a public street, we would recommend, that would be the point at which that the barricade would be removed.
I think we, we talked about after the first house is sold, and I think Mr. Wentz thought that would be possible.
It's possible.
So, can we change it that, I would like to change number three instead of until public infrastructure is completed to be until the first house is sold.
That wouldn't be our recommendation, but the council could certainly modify the condition if you wish.
But you know, actually, the other thing is, is many of those houses could be sold before it was ever built. I mean, I look at the, I get, I want this plot, and also I want you to, and I want this house in this block.
Occupied, yeah, no, until the first house is occupied.
No, until the first house is occupied.
Then no one needs, no one's living there, you don't need to get.
You're really requiring, in that case, you're really requiring staff to monitor a lot of factors that, as Bill indicated, when the infrastructure's in, the road is accepted by the city and it's ready for traffic is typically when we would remove barricades unless council directs otherwise. You recall in the Indian Hills development when there was quite a controversy about removing a barricade that had been there for a long time mainly because people liked the fact that traffic wasn't coming through even though there was a quite acceptable street on both sides of the barricade. So, you raise unreasonable expectations.
Yeah, I mean, I think the point of it would be to not have construction equipment going through Slonaker until there's someone that lives there that needs to get out and they could continue to go on trail the same way the other construction equipment did.
We do have the need to have, and we can certainly look at the barricade style, I think they were looking at eco blocks as being the method which they'd close roadway because we do want, we would wish to have fire access once wood framing construction begins. We want to make sure we have clear fire access for fire suppression should we have an event. We could certainly work with the fire department to come up with a barricade or a gate that would meet that function to give them access, but it would be our preference that upon completion and acceptance of the street would be the point. But if the council wishes to modify that to be, you know, the first home is sold, we just need to coordinate that with the developer to make sure that we're aware when that event occurs and can make sure that access is gained at that time.
That's what I would like to do.
Gina.
Well, Sandra hasn't talked for a while, I'm sorry. She's squawked too.
Sure. I feel like that is adding things that aren't going to help or hinder what's trying to go on here and I think that's adding a lot more potential work that doesn't need to be added. I don't see where the train of thought is on that exactly, so.
Okay. I mean, I think what the train of thought from what some citizens have said is there will be, that the idea of having it blocked off during the infrastructure construction is so they don't have all the construction stuff driving through their street and that they want to sustain that for as long as possible. So, it sustains it for longer because you may have another, we don't know how long, how many months or years of other construction equipment going on building houses before anyone is sold.
Are you at all nervous about the precedent that's going to set that? I suddenly started thinking about it, that we have this history of doing it when the infrastructure gets in, everything is done and at some point that it's something we're changing that precedent here and I'm not sure that that makes sense.
I mean, I don't know that there's a problem with changing a precedent if no one lives there, but I'm.
But living and a first house sold again is a whole different process.
Kind of sounds like we got three councils as opposed to that, one or two that's not, Brandy, so.
I'm concerned too about, I think it puts our staff in a terrible position and I think that it also sends yet another message to a developer that we are extremely painful to deal with.
Okay, so, we're looking at action number three.
Okay. I move that the access shall be restricted to the subject property from Slonaker Drive to emergency services access only until all required public infrastructure is completed in accordance with the approved development agreement.
Right, that's one of the conditions.
Your Honor, I believe we're at the rezone. I think we need to address the rezone ordinance first before we move on to the subdivision plat.
I agree with you. We're, action number three, you guys.
Sorry, we got a little, we got a little.
I got confused between the three up there and the three on the screen, okay, just give me a second there, you know, I'm going to redo that motion and we'll try it one more time. And move to approve the proposed zoning ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that it be read by title and published by summary and adopting, and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to approve the proposed zoning ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings that be read by title and published by summary and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria. I will start to roll with Ann.
Name.
Brandy.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Aye.
Okay, with that, that is ordinance number 2021 day 17, an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for the zoning of 20.55 acre property described in section one, property one, as moderate density, single family residential R2, providing for the zoning of a 1.18 acre property described in section one, property two, as neighborhood business and providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, providing for this ordinance to be full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law. Okay, with that, we can move on to item number four. Gina, you.
Your Honor, I move we approve the PUD for Woodbury addition and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
Second.
I think you skipped part of it.
Did I skip part of it?
No, she got it.
You got it all, you got it all, okay.
She got it.
I seconded it.
Okay, Gina made a motion, Maureen seconded that motion to approve the PUD for Woodbury addition and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria. I will start to roll with Maureen.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
And Ann.
Name.
Okay, that leaves option, or action number five.
I will move that, let's see, we approve the preliminary plat for Woodbury additions, addition with these conditions except change number three to the, until the first house is sold. And the reason I'll say that, we can have further discussion, now we have it a second. The developer said that would work all right and so, and it would help the neighbors and that's what they're asking for and we already have the access for the construction and I don't see it making anything more difficult for them. That's my discussion points.
Okay. Maureen.
It appears that Mr. Wentz wants to respond to that, I don't know if that's, if we can do that in the middle of it?
Speaker, I just briefly.
Well, it's.
I don't know if he can. What are those parliamentary rules?
It's actually, it's, well, actually, we're in a deliberating state. No, you can't, Mr. Wentz, I'm sorry about that. This body up here is going to make that determination whether it's accurate or whether it's not accurate and, and so, Brandy made a motion and Ann seconded that motion. And I wasn't quite sure, except for item number three, to access that property only until after the first house is sold, is that what you said?
Right.
So, that's the motion. The other two, recommendation one and two stay in place as intact. Okay, everybody understand that? Okay, and we'll start to roll with Maureen.
Oh, God. Um. Okay, hold on.
Well, I'll tell you what, while you're thinking, I'll start to roll with Ann.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
Sandra.
No.
Gina.
No.
Maureen. Okay, so that one, that motion failed. Maybe I'd like to take a stab at making a different motion.
I'll try it.
Okay, Gina.
All right, now let me figure out where I need to. I move that we approve the preliminary plat for Woodbury addition with conditions as shown on the screen and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoned statement of relevant criteria.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Gina and a second by Sandra to approve the preliminary plat for Woodbury addition with conditions and adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission reasoned statement of relevant criteria and I will start to roll with Maureen.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Brandy.
Name.
And Ann.
Name.
Okay, that passed, so five passed as well, so thank you everybody for enduring that public hearing, it was great participation by a number of people. Thank you all very much and after all, ladies and gentlemen, we're all citizens, we're all working together, this is a wonderful community and we will continue moving forward. Thank you all very much. With that, I am going to take a five-minute recess and we will come back at 10:02.
But every, yeah, I mean, every time something, we already talked about it. Every time something comes up.
We are going to resume the meeting, ladies and gentlemen, please everybody sit down, take their positions.
Yeah, yeah.
We are moving on to. We're moving on to item number six, replacement of ordinance 2021 day zero six with ordinance 2021 day zero six A. Mike Ray, you have got the podium, sir.
Thank you again, your honor, this is pertaining to ordinance 2021 dash oh six, which was approved by council on June 7th of this year. This was in regards to the Eddington annexation on South Palouse River Drive. The ordinance was approved subsequently sent to the Idaho State Tax Commission. They ended up returning a letter to the city clerk, which occurred on August 6th of this year stating there were some deficiencies in the exhibit map. So typically the way it works is the applicant conducts a survey and generates the exhibit map that's attached to the ordinance. And that's what occurred in this circumstance. So the tax commission ended up stating that there were some deficiencies with the meets and bounds description. So typically every property line needs to have a meets and bounds description in order to accurately reflect the property line on the map. And so the applicant has since corrected the items identified by the tax commission. We've inserted that in a revised ordinance, so that's ordinance 2021 dash zero six A. And it's before the council's consideration tonight, and certainly try to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mike? Sandra?
I move that we approve the replacement of ordinance two zero two one dash zero six with ordinance two zero two one dash zero six A.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve by Sandra and a second by Gina to approve the ordinance at 2021 day zero six with ordinance 2021 day zero six A. I'll start the roll with Ann.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Aye.
Okay, and that ordinance is number 2021 day zero six A. An ordinance in the city of Moscow, a municipal corporation in the state of Idaho, providing that the land described in section one of this ordinance and generally shown at an exhibit A, attached or to and incorporated by this reference be annexed to the city of Moscow, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after passage, approval and publication according to law. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number seven, proposed neighborhood traffic calming policy. Bill Belknap, you have the podium, sir.
I'll take this off for a moment. Good evening. Oh, so as you may be aware, and we've kind of talked about this committee in prior meetings, the city has received a number of requests for traffic calming to be considered for specific neighborhoods within the community and more. The one neighborhood we actually received the most requests from recently was the Indian Hills neighborhood. Once Alice Street connected the Indy Hills ninth addition up to the other prior additions and allowed that condition from Southview from Indian Hills Drive, they experienced more traffic volume and we're looking at the, the need for traffic calming in that location. That identified a need for us to, to develop a standardized procedure and methodology to assess traffic calming requests, which led to the development of this policy with the Transportation Commission over the last several months. So we're here to present it to you this evening. The policy itself starts off with kind of a statement of its objective and really it is provide that orderly and consistent methodology and process for the assessment of the need, effectiveness and impact of installing traffic, neighborhood traffic calming devices. And, and to make those decisions based on an engineering analysis and the engineering staff's professional opinion. There are a number of principles that are identified in it that, you know, really we need to understand that neighborhood traffic calming devices do present a cost, both with their initial installation, but also they can reduce the efficiency of roadway maintenance operations. That's typically snow removal and sweeping. And so we want to make sure that we're applying them in the appropriate locations. That the, we also want to recognize that the installation of traffic calming devices may change traffic patterns and divert traffic into adjacent areas, which could cascade into requests for additional traffic calming devices, compounding that expense and reducing, and that reduction of efficiency in roadway maintenance activities. So we really want to be careful about the utilization. They shed, they should be reserved for the control of vehicle traffic when it's determined there is a unique circumstances or circumstance or condition that warrants their installation and generally stop signs are not a good traffic calming device. There have been several studies, some with mixed results, but some that do indicate that you actually see increasing speeds between stop signs as people try to recapture that speed. You also have the environmental impacts of the deceleration and acceleration, again, the emissions associated that. And so generally we, we try to stay away from stop signs as a means of, of traffic calming. Generally, these devices are most appropriately located and installed on local residential streets and not to be installed on those higher class streets of collectors or arterials unless it's deemed appropriate by the city engineer. And there are instances and cases where that is the case, for example, here at the high school, we had the, the elevated crosswalk. Or for example, at the middle school on D Street that is a minor arterial, we did traffic calming installations there because of the, the vulnerable population in the schools that are adjacent to those locations. The evaluation for the need of traffic calming devices will be based upon traffic volumes, speeds, pedestrian bicycle activity, restricted sight lines, accident records, unusual sight conditions, adjacent land uses such as, as schools and roadway geometrics. Vehicle speeds and accident history will be the primary criteria. Generally, we are trying to address speeds, we are trying to address any potential accident history and safety, and those will be the primary criteria that we'll be looking at. And the functional, just to clarify for the designation, we'll be looking at the comp plan to look at the functional designation of those roadways. The policy outlines a procedure and essentially there's a request and I did not update this text, but it is updated in the draft policy that's in your packet. There's one change requested by the committee, but essentially we want to make sure that it's just not one individual in a neighborhood requesting a traffic control device, that it is a, a condition that's being experienced by most, multiple people in that area. So we would like to have a written request signed by the owners or residents of 25% of the dwelling units and/or businesses within two blocks of that proposed traffic calming device to make sure that there is a universal need, that there'll be acceptance, that as soon as we install it, we're not going to get requests for it to be removed. Then essentially we, we have a, a neighborhood that's pretty unified around the fact that this is, is a necessary thing that they'd like to have installed in their neighborhood. It'll be submitted to the engineering division upon the approved form. The requester then will be contacted by the engineering department to confirm that it was received, answering initial questions, gather additional information to determine if a traffic calming device does look like it could be something that might be appropriate. If it is, then we'll continue through the, the policy. We'll then conduct a site visit, perform a visual assessment, documentation of the area, look at any concern, visually observe traffic patterns and speeds within the area. We'll also then will deploy traffic volume, speed measuring devices to collect actual speed and volume, traffic volume information at the location. We also will review the five-year accident history within the vicinity of the area to assess whether we have any accidents and whether there's any of those accidents that could have been mitigated or reduced or avoided by a traffic calming device. We also will solicit input from the streets department, the police department, fire department, just to look at, you know, again, that accident history, any past enforcement activities they may have conducted there and ensure that we are taking into consideration emergency vehicle access routes in that vicinity. If the city engineer determines that the criteria for installation have met, and we'll go through those criteria here in a moment, or are not met. So this is actually a process for an appeal. We will, the request will be notified of the city's findings, they may appeal that decision of the city engineer by submitting requests to the city supervisor within 15 days. And that would move forward into the city supervisor. City supervisor would review the request and the decision, really limiting the scope of that review to the adopted policy, the data's collected to ensure that the decision made was consistent with this adopted policy. If it is not for some reason, then that decision can be remanded back to the city engineer for further analysis and consideration. So those criteria, right now we are proposing the two or more of the following criteria be met for the approval of the installation of a neighborhood traffic calming device. One is traffic volume, so a traffic calming device may be warranted if the number of vehicles on a local residential street exceeds 1,500 vehicles a day. Typically, that's in the upper end range that we see for local residential streets in town. That's not the case for those that may be collectors or arterials, where we may see anywhere from, you know, four to 6,000 vehicles a day in a collector, up to 20,000 on an arterial. For a local residential street, traditionally that is a, a fairly high volume that if we're seeing more than that, that really indicates that we're having cut through traffic that does not have its origin or destination in the neighborhood traveling that roadway. Traffic speeds would also be a criteria, again, traffic calming devices will maybe appropriate where the observed 85th percentile speed exceeds 10 miles per hour over the posted speed limit of the roadway. It's, it's something you're commonly going to see five miles per hour over that is, is about the 85th percentile. But if we're getting to 10 miles per hour, then we, we do have a speed issue that we feel would need to be considered. Accident history, again, we're looking at if there are more five or more reported accidents within the prior five-year period that could have been minimized or avoided by the installation of a traffic calming device, that would be a criteria. And then number four would be if, if this roadway has been designated as a, on a bike route or on a neighborhood greenway with a high bicycle and pedestrian use, it would be appropriate to try to look at reducing vehicle speeds. And then criteria five is kind of to catch all, there are other considerations. Again, this is where we take into account vulnerable populations, schools, parks, pedestrian crossing locations where we have a high concentration of pedestrians or a particular age group of pedestrians that may need special consideration. The policy also includes a number of, just to kind of do the education process, help illustrate the different types of traffic calming devices that may be considered and, and may be installed in kind of an escalating fashion as we look at trying to do the, the minimum level of, of control that may be necessary to try to help reduce speed. So certain additional regulatory or advisory speed limit signage could be a first early start. Maybe we don't have a speed limit sign within the vicinity or some distance away. So that could be a first step in trying to advise motorists what the speed limit is in that location. We might also consider looking at dynamic speed signs. We did acquire two of these last year and deployed them up in the Indian Hills neighborhood, although it's been fairly quiet this year because of public waterline construction. But again, that's, you're very familiar with the dynamic speed signs that have the posted CB limit and also measure the speed of the motorists, advising them if they're speeding, if they're driving too quickly in that roadway. Other things that can be considered are elements that reduce that, narrow the roadway and give the perception of a narrowed roadway that tends to help give friction on the side and slow vehicle speed. So we could look at the ability to add on-street parking if it doesn't exist in that location, that can be a strategy. We can also look at landscaping as treat tree installation, again, to provide that visual narrowing of the roadway and that traffic calming features. We may also look at speed humps, these are not speed bumps, but larger in, in length. And for, you know, essentially a three, three-inch rise over approximately 10 to 20 feet, that a vehicle can crest and, and go over more smoothly, but does require slowing over the vehicle. Other elements could be roadway narrowing, we've done these in other locations, especially around schools. Lena Wettmore on First Street's kind of a good example, when we did a Safe Rest to School grant project, we did sidewalk installation and also did curb bulbs to, to narrow that crossing distance for the pedestrian, also narrow the roadway for the motorists, so they kind of feel like they need to slow down when they approach the intersection. Chicanes are another strategy, we don't have any really good examples of that in the community, but that is where you can take a straight roadway and by putting opposing offset islands, kind of create a curvature to that roadway. And that helps motorists feel like they need to slow down to maneuver around the corners. Generally, when a traffic calming device is deemed to be appropriate, then we will draft a traffic calming plan that will cover the subject area, which will identify the proposed traffic calming devices and measures to be employed. Will describe any proposed device phasing and conditions under which additional further traffic calming devices may be installed. So it may start off with the regulatory, a speed limit signs, it may move to the dynamic speed signs. It then could move to something either on-street parking or potentially a speed hump if it, if it, nothing is effectively reducing the speeds in the area. But this plan will help lay that process out. And again, we will phase that installation oftentimes, again, because we have limited financial resources to accomplish this with some of the lower cost measures moving up to higher cost items. And it's also important to recognize that if it is a more extensive traffic calming project, that, that may take some time for the city to accumulate capital funding to construct it or to potentially seek grant funding to address that. So for example, the, the D and Mountain View intersection is one that we've talked about recently. That's likely going to be a subject of a TAP grant application, a transportation alternatives program that helps provide school safety, facilities, pedestrian safety improvements, projects. Sometimes those take three to four years by the time you, you make the application and the grant is awarded. So it may take some time to, to fund these. We would anticipate we would start off the program if the council chooses to proceed with this with a small allocation within the capital fund, probably somewhere in the 20 to 30,000 that we'd allocate from the roadway improvement program. And that would give us some amount of funding to address any requests as they come up. And the council always has the authority to appropriate funding if we had a, a larger project the council wished to pursue. The one other item that's not included in the presentation, well, actually it's on the next slide. So as I mentioned, this policy was developed, reviewed and recommended for approval by the city's transportation commission. It was also reviewed by the Public Works Finance Committee on September 13th, and there were two modifications. The first of which was, is the last bullet here, is modify that the qualified requesters would include residents rather than only property owners. And then the other that request was made was that the city would not duplicate reviews for the same location until three years had passed. So we weren't responding to multiple inquiries from the same location. We do the analysis, we make our decision, there'd be the opportunity for appeal, but we wouldn't do another review for a three-year time period. That was a request of the committee when it was reviewed. So the proposed policies before the council for your review and consideration of adoption this evening, and we have a accompanying resolution for you to pass as well. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Questions, Brandy.
So actually, I was the one that requested the three-year thing, and now that I'm looking at it, would there, could it make sense to say, have some kind of clause unless, I mean, maybe there would be some circumstances, I'm thinking of accidents, that would warrant it? Or is there some way that we could just?
Sure, we could say, so I don't have the text right in front of you, we could say three years unless surrounding circumstances had changed dramatically.
Yeah, to be determined by.
Unless the city engineer has determined that there are extraordinary circumstances that warrant an additional review.
You were talking about five accidents in five years, so if a couple of them happened, it would trigger that.
Yeah, I mean, just something that would be, that up to the city engineer could be determined to be, yeah, this is a significant enough change within this three years that you can now.
We could certainly do that.
Great, yeah.
And, and then does this, with that number, letter E, are, is it only people on local residential streets that can do this? It says that that's typically the only place they will be unless the city engineer determines.
Correct, but then the request does not limit it to those class of streets.
Okay, so, but one of the criteria is.
It's a kind of guiding policy that that's, that's where we want to install these, unless we have extraordinary circumstances like a school location.
Okay, so someone else can, but that one criteria, about 1,500 vehicles, isn't going to apply to that.
That would not apply in that case, correct, correct. It, it would then be speeds and other, other considerations or other conditions.
Yeah, I had a comment, I was the one who requested that it be changed from property owners to residents, which I appreciate you making the change, I think that's great.
Okay, other questions? Sandra?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve and adopt the proposed neighborhood traffic calming policy and associated resolution.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Sandra and a second by Ann to approve and adopt the proposed neighborhood traffic calming policy and associated resolution. I'll start the roll with Maureen.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Brandy. And Ann.
Yep, aye, I also just want to say, like, that pretty good timing with that, all the discussion that we just had about traffic. It's really nice to have an actual policy that then we can direct residents to if they have concerns now or in the future as things change, that there's an actual policy. So I think it's really great to get this in place right now, thank you.
Well, with that, is the end of our meeting.
I'd like to vote, please, aye.
I thought you did.
Oh, I thought you did say aye.
I threw everything off. I support this, and I vote yes.
You voted for Ann, maybe her day.
I don't know.
Okay, well, thank you, ma'am.
I think it's unanimous, but.
Yeah, it was.
We let her vote.
That is the end of our meeting this evening, and I am going to dispense with the reports because of this late hour, because we are going to adjourn to executive session per Idaho Code seven, four days, two zero six, one C and F. And this meeting will not reconvene once that is over. I will take a roll on that, start with Ann.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
Sandra, Gina.
Aye.
Maureen, okay. 10:22, folks.
Aye.
Ten point two, folks.
Victoria?
You need to ask somebody if they'll take...